Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this special meeting of the Larkspur City Council. The first item on this evening's agenda is the roll call. Allison, may we please have the roll?
Councilmember Candell?
I am here.
Councilmember Harrah?
Here.
Councilmember Paulson?
Here.
Councilmember Way?
Here.
Mayor Holmer?
Here. Now, would you please join us if you're able in our pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public comment. Now, this is public comment for items that are not on the agenda this evening. The agenda item this evening is related to 1251 South Aliseo Drive. So if there are public comment this evening on items not related to that item, now is the time to make those comments. Allison, do you see any raised hands?
We do have raised hands. I'll unmute and ask if these may be raised hands for the agenda item. So our first comment from Larry Catherine Baskerville.
We're here on the agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, you may need to call for everyone to lower their hand who wants to speak on the agenda item. Because there's quite a few people with their hands up and it's gonna be mean. Allison will be spending the next 20 minutes calling on them.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. With those members of the public that want to speak on the agenda item this evening, please lower your hands at this time. We'll call for the agenda item and public comment on that agenda item in just a few moments. Thank you for your cooperation. Now, are there public comment on items that are not on the agenda this evening?
Thank you. I'm looking for any raised hands from our audience members. And there is no, I apologize, Brian B.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. I'm dialing in opposition for the homeless Home Key facility. And I've been on numerous amounts of calls over the last few weeks, and I strongly oppose the way it's written. And just, it needs much more further thought and review.
Okay, we're going to get, we're going to get to that item in just a moment.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. City Manager.
You may want to confer with the city attorney, but perhaps you'd like to move public comment to the end of the meeting and for off agenda items.
Okay.
I think that would be fine. I think that we're gonna end up with too much confusion at this point. And so we might as well just move on to the agendized item and let people raise their hands. And if people are left at the end of the meeting who want to speak on a non-agenda item, then give them an opportunity at the end of the meeting to do so.
Okay. Thanks for your help with this. All right, we're gonna move the balance of public comment to the, after the business item on the agenda this evening, if there's no objection. All right, we'll move to the business item on the agenda this evening, which is consideration by the city council of a comment letter on a proposed project Home Key site at 1251 South Aliseo Drive. May we have a staff report, please, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be very brief, and then we're going to invite some representatives of the project to do, to provide you with about a 10-minute presentation, after which we'll turn it back to you and you can conduct the public portion of the meeting. We're here this evening because at your last regular meeting, the council heard a number of public speakers who asked that the council hold a agenda item to discuss the proposed project Home Key at 1251 South Aliseo. And the council discussed that they felt that was appropriate, that there be a city meeting to have that discussion. The council also indicated they might want, as part of that meeting, the ability to provide some sort of comment or feedback to the county, which is the agency that is in charge of this project. And so after sort of reviewing the direction from the council, we thought that the best approach would be to have this meeting and allow the public comment, allow the council comment. Staff's gonna be keeping track of concerns that are expressed and will be creating a summary. When you're done taking all the public comment and when you're done with your own comments, we'll put those up on the screen so the council can then decide what, if anything, you want to put in the letter if you decide you do want to provide some sort of written comment to the county. Now, a number of the county staff are here, including the speakers that are gonna take over in a moment. And I believe if Supervisor Rice is not here, she will be. There's so many names, I apologize, we're up at 200-something in the list of attendees. So you have a number of county representatives you can ask questions of as well. You have a number of your city staff, but this isn't our project. So our familiarity with it is much more as a responding agency for concerns about the facility in terms of the physical issues and sequel type issues that may arise as we go through the process. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna turn it over if it's okay with you.
Can you, one question, Mr. City Manager? Could you please explain the context in which the county and the presentation has been placed on our agenda this evening? Because this was not a scheduled presentation.
Well, again, your staff is not an expert in Project Home Key, and we're not the implementers of this project. And we felt it was appropriate for the people who are familiar with the project to be present and able to answer your questions. And we also felt, as essentially the project advocates or implementers, that they should have an opportunity to provide you with some context for your discussion this evening. I know all of the council members have attended at least some, if not all, the listening sessions and public outreach sessions that have occurred. So I think you all have a fairly good understanding, but I think having the county provide us with some additional background would be helpful. And so we've asked them to come in and make some opening comments for you and to make themselves available for your questions.
Well, we appreciate that. All right, would the next step be to invite the county?
Yes, so I believe we're gonna start with Ken Shapiro from the county of Marin, and he's going to probably have a few folks that he'll introduce as well. I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ken.
Thank you, Dan. And can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Well, good evening, and thank you so much for inviting me and my colleagues to present to you this evening. I know, as Stan mentioned, that the council is most interested in getting to the Q and A session this evening. So we're gonna make a very abbreviated presentation, which provides a very high-level overview of our efforts to date, plans for the property at 1251 South Aliseo Drive, and a quick run-through of the most frequently asked questions we've been getting. Gary Najer Reese, who's our Director of Homelessness and Whole Person Care, will do the FAQs after I spend a few minutes here. And I failed to introduce myself, I apologize. I'm Ken Shapiro. I'm the COO and Assistant Director for the county's Department of Health and Human Services. Once Gary runs through the FAQs, we'll be happy to take your questions along with our colleagues from Episcopal Community Services, and I'll describe exactly who they are in just a moment. So Gary, if you could move to slide three. So for any audience members who are not familiar, the county of Marin and our development partner were seeking to convert a vacant facility at 1251 South Aliseo Drive into permanent supportive housing and evidence-based best practice that has been embraced by Marin for solving chronic homelessness. Bucking the trend, Marin reduced both overall and chronic homelessness from 2017 to 2019, the last period for which a complete count was conducted. Since 2017, we have housed over 440 chronically homeless people with a 95% retention rate. That 95% retention rate is well above the national standard and is a result of radical collaboration among the county's committed homeless service providers. Next slide, please. Next slide, thank you. We were successful in acquiring two properties under the first round of Project Home Key back in 2020. In early 2021, it became clear that the state intended to host another round of funding. Before they made that announcement, we hosted 10 community forums in Marin to gather input. That was in April of 2021, again, prior to any funding announcements coming out from the state. We also sought proposals from property owners that same month, back in April. And at the same time, that summer, we selected Episcopal Community Services as our development partner. That selection was made in July, again, of 2021. Since then, the county and Episcopal Community Services have jointly reviewed over 20 possible project sites. And the site we're discussing this evening was far and away the most viable option under Project Home Key's very strict criteria. As soon as we determined the feasibility of the site, we issued a press release jointly with the city to announce our intent to apply. That was in September 2021, again, before the release of any funding notification from the state. Since then, we've hosted or participated in seven separate community forums and have had numerous individual meetings with local stakeholders. This is really important for those of you who are listening this evening and haven't had a chance to participate in any of those community forums. I want to make sure you know that we've maintained and updated a website throughout this process. It's 1251southaliseo.com. Again, anyone who's not had an opportunity is in the audience to participate in a community forum about this project. I strongly recommend you visit the site for a much more comprehensive review of the project than we're able to provide in this very short venue this evening. Again, it's 1251southaliseo.com. We've also built a large email list and use that list to communicate directly with interested stakeholders. And then just lastly, I'll mention that we recently kicked off a community advisory committee that has and will continue to provide input on both site and program design. And we want to walk through some of the most frequently asked questions we're getting, and then we're happy to take the questions that you have for us this evening. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague Gary Najer Reese.
Thank you, Ken. And again, I am the Homelessness and Whole Person Care Director for Marin Health and Human Services. We're sharing these frequently asked questions, not as a repetition from previous meetings, but some of them have been updated based on questions and concerns from the community. So the first question, what was our vision for this property? Ken, I think covered already, this is a formerly skilled nursing facility located in Greenbregg, could create between 43 and 50 new permanent supportive housing units with intensive wraparound services. Critical to understand, this is not a shelter or a transitional program. This is for long-term residents who can thrive and integrate in the community, and it's the opportunity to upgrade a derelict property into a shining community asset. And you can see from some of these slides, some of the improvements that are desperately needed. Who will live there? Single adults, both male and female, who are experiencing chronic homelessness. Chronic homelessness is defined as homelessness lasting a year or longer plus a disabling condition, which can be physical, mental, or developmental. Approximately 55% of our current permanent supportive housing residents are male, and 45% are female, and the average age of residents is 46 and over. Is this program serving the mentally ill? Serious mental illness, or SMI, is a term used to describe behavioral health issues like major depression and a bipolar disorder. For some people experiencing chronic homelessness, their disabling condition is an SMI, but not all. To expand mental health supports, the county applied for state funding for 16 of the units to serve SMI clients. And Marin County's permanent supportive housing programs are designed to serve people with SMI regardless. Just some photos and some folks. How are residents selected and what is the process? The coordinated entry system assesses needs among people experiencing homelessness throughout Marin. CES helps providers triage who is most urgently in need of housing, while also determining fit for unit types. These units are not on the open market and will be coordinated among Marin's service providers. Episcopal Community Services will not be referring clients from San Francisco, as has been rumored in the community. Outreach workers and our shelter staff engage with future residents prior to placement and provide a warm handoff to case managers within these supportive housing programs. What is the stopping model? There will be a 24/7 staff presence. There will be a 24/7 property management onsite through a combination of front desk staff and/or a live-in manager unit. There'll be onsite case management and clinical services primarily during regular business hours. And there will be a community safety service team to service community liaisons to prevent and de-escalate issues, though will also be an external community presence. What exactly do the case management services include? The county is committed to guaranteeing supportive services for all people we are housing. These services include health, behavioral health, counseling, benefits advocacy, financial literacy, food, et cetera. We maintain small case management caseloads, 1 to 17 staff-to-client ratio, allowing for multiple contact points a week. Partnership and support from all Marin County service providers, so no one does this alone. And program success equals ongoing housing stability and improved health and wellness, so we're invested in the continuing success of everyone we house. What exactly does the community safety services team entail? We understand that residents want safety and security in their homes and neighborhood. CSS is an alternative to traditional security models, which will serve as an external presence for program staff at the project. The CSS team will take the time to form meaningful relationships with nearby residents, business owners, volunteers, residents, and visitors, so they're trusted and welcome. NCSS staff will engage with people in the immediate vicinity of the property, support neighborhood beautification efforts, de-escalate challenges, and want appropriate contact first responders. Are there rules residents must follow? Absolutely. Professional third-party property management with a resident manager. Residents will be signing leases and paying 30% of their income towards rent. Residents will have the standard rights and responsibilities of tenancy, and residents can be evicted. There'll be a 24/7 staff presence and the CSS team to quickly address and de-escalate any onsite issues. And in addition to the lease, there will be community standards, such as that all guest visits must be pre-arranged with staff. What happens if there are behavioral issues onsite? Residents of the building are subject to all the same laws as all community members. All residents have the rights and responsibilities of tenants, as does any renter in Marin. Residents will also be expected to follow community guidelines, including a commitment to safety. There'll be weekly meetings with other nonprofits to leverage countywide assistance and housing options. And as a last resort, residents with multiple unresolvable lease violations or other serious infractions may be terminated from tenancy. What happens if residents engage in illegal activities onsite or nearby? Residents are subject to all the same laws as community members. If residents engage in illegal activities, they will be subject to the legal process afforded to anyone accused of a crime. And residents will not be subject to any additional requirements or restrictions, nor will they be exempted from standard legal protections. How can we ensure this program will not have the issues that arose at Victory Village? Victory Village is a different model from what is being proposed at South Aliseo and other sites in the development pipeline, such as Mill Street 2.0 and the Casa Blaina. South Aliseo and the other sites will have onsite supportive services staffing, who will be more immediately able to respond and de-escalate conflicts or crises. Victory Village has been an important learning experience for supporting clients and has demonstrated that, just like the general population, different people have different housing needs, and we sometimes have to work hard to find the right fit. Will sex offenders be allowed to live here? So this project is funded with HUD Housing Choice vouchers, which prohibit any household member subject to a lifetime registration requirement under any state sex offender registration program from living at this site. Anyone prohibited by the terms of their probation or parole and/or additional judicial conditions, such as living in the vicinity of a park or school, will not reside at the site. What is gonna happen in neighboring parks? We all share the desire to keep all local parks as thriving community assets. If there are issues, neighbors can contact the site director, property management, or the CSS team. Residents will also have their own outdoor space of the property itself, and we are planning to build a fence along the property. The property will not impact the nearby bird sanctuary, and the county is coordinating with county parks and the sheriff's office to ensure a continued presence in Hal Brown Park. And what is the community advisory group? The CAG has been formed and modeled after a similar effort with the Casa Blaina in Corder Madera. We're envisioning a focus on safety, schools, nearby parks, communications, program metrics, site improvements, and other related topics. Community stakeholders, including seven neighbors, city and county staff, ECS, the Kenfield School District, volunteers from Safe Roots to School, and the Central Marin Police Authority are all part of the group. The first meeting was in December, and the communications committee has met twice. Activity will pick up if and when funding is awarded. And what's next? We're waiting on the state funding announcement. The Board of Supervisors hearing is tentatively scheduled for February 15th. We'll continue to seek additional funding to support the development, operations, and services costs. And if awarded funding, we're not expecting move-in for 12 months. So the community advisory group will continue to help drive actions to prepare for that opening. Any questions and comments can be sent to homekey@marincounty.org. And as Ken mentioned, you can find detailed information, including other FAQs, on the 1251s'aliseo.com site. And finally, we want to acknowledge that we have heard and listened to all the community feedback through the many forums that have been held, and we are continually making changes to the project to improve. I wanted to just hit on a couple of those before we shift over to questions. One important area is around expanding safety. We're specifically gonna be working with the CSS team to time their presence with students going to and coming home from school to support the efforts of Safe Roots. The sheriff has officially now named a deputy to lead on homelessness and mental health issues and will be a member of the community advisory group, and we're very pleased to have him on board. And we'll continue to strengthen the community safety services team by ensuring they have the deepest and most broad connections possible to all the neighbors, schools, volunteers, parks, and programs and law enforcement in the area. We're working to expand county services based on what we've heard about concerns in the parks. So we are partnering with Parks and Open Space on their parks presence. Currently, they have a ranger once a day and a security presence three times a day and an online incident reporting tool for non-emergencies. And if the CAG would like to see changes in that or increases in that schedule, we can work to negotiate that with Parks. A deepening engagement with our new neighbors and programs that serve the community. There's been an active discussion and engagement with volunteers from Safe Roots to School. And we've engaged a deep bench of county and local elected officials and law enforcement in the surrounding area and have provided ongoing information about the project and listened to their concerns as well. We'll continue to have stronger communication from the county. We'll be strengthening our messaging around housing plus support so that residents understand more about the successes and services that we continually engage and re-engage individuals on. We've engaged in a robust and consistent process with the community to educate, listen, and respond to concerns with public forums, meeting with neighborhood associations, and others. We've developed and launched the project website, and we'll continue to update and refine it, so it's the one-stop source of information. And we'll continue to update the FAQs as additional questions come in. To ensure the most supportive services to residents, we've secured, we are working to secure additional funding to support those most in need. We've applied for additional funds under the New Place Like Home program to deepen the services for individuals with a mental health diagnosis. We are actively learning from other projects and ensuring fairness in our coordinated entry system. We folded, we're folding in ECS early to our network of community providers to ensure strong connections with a full continuum of care. We've listened carefully to lessons learned with the community from Homeward Bound in their process and working to develop Mill Street 2.0 in the Casa Blaina. And we'll continue to listen to their experiences as they welcome residents into those sites. And we've learned especially from the Casa Blaina experience that a strong connection to neighbors is essential and added in the community advisory group. And we have reflected on and affirmed the balanced process of coordinated entry. And finally, we're working to expand onsite services and ensuring the most supportive design. So far, that has included working to expand the office space in the building to provide a larger array of services, including case management, mental health services, and physical health services, all onsite, to make it as easy as possible for residents to engage. We've reviewed recommended design changes from those who have visited the property and those suggested in community forums that could be made to further support independent living for residents, safety, and security. And we're working with ECS on a designated smoking area. So now's the time to turn it over for questions. I'll turn it back to the council.
Thank you for that presentation. Dan, would you suggest that we take questions from the council members? Or go directly to the public?
No, I think this is a good opportunity for the council to ask its questions, and that may be beneficial to the community to hear those responses.
All right. Are there members of the city council that would like to ask questions at this time?
I do think actually Ken put his hand up to probably introduce all the other faces that have popped up on the screen so that we know who the folks are before we go too far.
That's correct. Yeah, thank you very much, Dan. So we're now joined by my colleague Ashley Hart McIntyre. She's the senior analyst and policy homelessness policy expert for the county of Marin. Andrew Henning with Opening Doors Marin. Kevin Kitchingham with Episcopal Community Services. And Chris Caendrio, I probably pronounced it incorrectly, the COO for Episcopal Community Services. And we're all here to answer your questions, and thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for all for attending this evening. I see councilmember Candell has his hand up. Scott?
Thank you. Thank you all for coming here. Appreciate it. My first comments are to the people who are participating from the city of Larkspur.
Scott, could we, could we just do questions at this time?
Yeah, but I just, before we went to comments, though, I just wanted to kind of tell the audience what we as a council are looking for, because we're gonna, you know, may or may not have some type of letter afterwards. I can say for me, what would be helpful for me in making this decision when people are speaking? And it would take me 30 seconds just to get that out, so it would help me make my decision at the end.
All right, just so it's clear, you're speaking for yourself.
Exactly. Just for myself. There is a chance that the city will take a position, whether or not we are in favor of this project. For the people who are speaking tonight, I'm gonna ask that you, if, and you don't have to listen to me, but it would be helpful if you could start by just letting us know, first of all, if you are in favor of the project. If you are not in favor of the project and would never be in favor of the project, meaning that it's just the wrong location, and no matter what we do, it's not gonna be right. Or the third category, that you're not in favor of the project because you feel maybe there's not been enough vetting, and there are things that can be done to make this work, such as, and again, fill in the blanks, additional security, you know, some vetting for the people who are gonna be living there, something like that. So that would be very helpful for me. So at the end, when we come back and talk about it, we'll have that information. The second thing I wanted to just mention to the mayor, I noticed there's about 200, 250 people. If everybody speaks for three minutes, there's a good chance this is gonna be a six-hour meeting. I didn't know if, again, it's up to you how you want to handle that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then I did have one or two quick questions to start it off, if I may. The first, I guess, would be to anybody in the county. I've spoken to the chief of police, who said, right now, at any one time, we have two to four homeless people in Larkspur. By putting people in this facility, it's going to tax their services. There will be additional calls for service. And I was wondering how much money the county is gonna be giving the city of Larkspur for additional officers so that we can handle the additional calls for service.
Are those your questions for this time?
One question. I have a second question. I was hoping I could get an answer to the first question. Is that what we're doing? We're asking questions? It's question and answer?
Let's, okay, that's, I'll take note of that, that one. What's your other question?
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, maybe this is a good time that we can kind of set how All right, so, 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 Mr. Mayor, maybe this is a good time that we can kind of set how, are, are, is the public going to ask questions? Will they be answered immediately? And the reason I'm asking is in the past, there were questions asked upfront, and it was, oh, we'll answer all the questions at the end. And a lot of times those questions were never answered. So I think it would be more effective if somebody in the audience has a, a specific question that we follow up that question with a specific answer before moving forward.
Well, I, I think generally that would be a, a, a good, uh, model to file, and I'd like that to model to be followed with the public. Um, and I'll, uh, allow them to respond to your questions, uh, now. I just would like to get the public comment as soon as we can.
Okay, I'll, I'll reserve, I'll reserve my questions till the end. That's fine. Uh, I'll reserve.
Uh, Vice Mayor Paulson and then Councilmember Way.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, I want to thank, uh, both Ken and Gary for, for the information. It's helpful. Um, I have a few short questions. I hope they can be answered. Um, one is to Scott's point, if you could, uh, let us know any budget for law enforcement that's included in the project, that would be great. Um, a second is, I just wanted to clarify, is this project a fifty-five-year commitment? So if for some reason, you know, there are problems with the project, is there any way to roll back this? Or is it, you know, it's set? I, I'm wondering where in the terms, uh, you know, we can get, uh, the length of the project. Um, and then also for accountability, um, is it ECS that will be ultimately the responsible party or the county or the state? Uh, I just was hoping for some clarification. And last, um, about the onsite manager, they do seem to be the critical personnel, the only one that's sort of wraparound. If you could just say a little bit more about what qualifications they'll have to have, you know, any mental health training, any security training and so forth. Um, thank you very much.
Um, I think it might be helpful for you to address the, the, uh, the law enforcement question and the, uh, questions from Vice Mayor Paulson. If you, if you can briefly, and, uh, Ken, do you have somebody who could respond to that?
Um, I'm looking to Ashley to see if she wants to try to go first, and we can back clean up for her, if that's okay.
Sure, happy to. So I'll begin with a question about, uh, law enforcement funding. So you heard in the presentation that we do have uh, plans for a community safety services team, uh, as a security measure to help uh, ensure that the entire community, but the residents of the property and the surrounding neighborhood are safe and have all of their needs met. Uh, we do not at this point anticipate, uh, providing additional funds for local law enforcement. Uh, most of the concerns that, um, most of the, the uh, impact that people who are experiencing homelessness have on, um, municipal services like law enforcement happen when they are in fact homeless. Uh, and these people will not be homeless. They will be permanently housed. Uh, when people are permanently housed, we see impacts on all kinds of services. Everything from, uh, emergency room utilization to law enforcement contacts, um, decrease sharply. Uh, and so, uh, impacts typically of these projects, uh, in our experience have been minimal on local law enforcement.
Thank you. Councilmember Way.
I, I have about three questions, but I'll, I'll start with the first one, which is, um, can you mention in April twenty twenty-one, you had multiple meetings about site selection? I'd like you to elaborate on, uh, what the criteria are for a successful site selection location. For instance, you mentioned Casa Buena, which is actually on a transportation line. It's close to a grocery store, close to banks, uh, coffee houses, et cetera, as opposed to the South Alicio property, which is pretty isolated. So can you elaborate on location?
I'll actually ask Andrew to discuss those ten community forums we had, if I could, and what the information was that we gathered there. And then Kevin is our lead site selection. So I think he can answer the specific question about the site selection.
Sure, yeah, I can go first. So, so basically, early in twenty twenty-one, we got notification from the state that there was at least some um, suggestion that there'd be a home key two or three. So before there was ever formal legislation, in order to get ahead of this and try to be more proactive, we hosted ten community information sessions that began in April. And the goal again was to basically describe home key one and the prospect of a home key two. And to coincide with that, the county released a request for interest from property owners that might want to participate in the program. You need a willing property owner that's willing to sell. And so basically, it was putting out a request to see if there was interest in doing that. Um, part of the community forums was to solicit feedback, and we also put out a survey to try to gather information about what the community would want to see. Um, and we, um, I can look back through and get the, the kind of recap notes from that. Um, but we, we were trying to get the public involved early on to try to determine the parameters for this round. And then in terms of the actual site selection for twelve fifty-one South Alicio, Kevin, I don't know if you'd want to add anything to the, the search of that, but that was the initial front end of it.
Sure, uh, as Andrew mentioned, we, we did examine, Kevin Kitchingham, Director of Housing Development, uh, at the State of New Services. We did look at a number of sites. Um, and one of, uh, the sites that came through, the one that was again today, was through the RFI process itself. Um, you know, uh, we're looking for sites that are, you know, developable. I mean, we were shown, uh, we were offered sites or toured sites that were, you know, from a, even from an engineering perspective, undevelopable, uh, just like on the side of a hill or in an unimproved area. So there were a lot of just, um, tenuous sites. This was one that fit the home key program, uh, like a glove in the sense that that program is looking for renovation opportunities of uh, former, um, motels was one of the, the first rounds of home key and, uh, former skilled nursing facilities. So that, that did fit nicely for the program.
So does it?
And just briefly, oh, sorry, Councilmember, I did find that email with the summary of some of the takeaways. So just to share that, some of the takeaways were, um, elevating underutilized properties, uh, blending in the home key sites, I think architecturally with the neighborhood character. Uh, so basically trying to find redevelopment opportunities versus new construction, uh, finding potential projects that distributed opportunities across the county, and then making sure that supportive services were a key piece of, um, the business plan.
Okay, um, my second question is having to do with the awarding of the money, um, process. So that is still contin, worse, this project is entirely contingent upon whether there is project funding from the state. I've looked high and low to try to find what the costs of this project are. Um, estimated costs and estimated renovation costs and maintenance costs. And there's been some comment from the community of, uh, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars per room. Um, do we have, do you have anywhere on the, on the website or available a real breakdown of the costs involved in this project?
Kevin, can you give the real-time assessment? And I can look on our website if we have that breakdown in the FAQs while you're speaking.
I know this is not, you know, funding, uh, specifically coming from Larkspur's budget, but I, I mean, one reason why I took this role was to be a fiduciary for this, the taxpayers' dollars. And I'm curious to find out where the extent of, uh, the taxpayer, um, investment into this property.
And just before you go, Kevin, I will just answer the, the first high-level question you had. This is, can, we are waiting a funding decision from the state, and it is contingent upon successful funding of that application we made to the state. We are waiting for that decision. Uh, go ahead, Kevin.
Yeah, so, um, when we went into Home Key, we had a budget of twenty point six million dollars and a renovation budget of about four point eight million dollars. Working through pricing with the general contractor and still making, um, a lot of trade-offs or decisions on design based on Community Advisory Group input and, um, some other external inputs. But that, that's where we were as of the home key application. Uh, again, we're waiting for our mechanical drawings coming, to come in, some more definition to our drawings to get another round of, uh, pricing estimates from our general contractor. So that's where we're at today.
So roughly thirty-one, roughly thirty-one million dollars.
No, I'm sorry, we went in for twenty point six million. Eleven million of that is the acquisition itself.
Okay.
You know, more than half is the land.
Okay, I, I, I don't want to take any more time because I know we have a lot of questions, but on your FAQ six, where you're talking about program success, how do you define success of a program like this? Is it individuals who, um, who eventually leave and find permanent housing outside of an institutional setting? Or how do you define success?
I can take this one. Uh, so typically, so just to reemphasize, this is a permanent housing facility. So we don't anticipate that people will be leaving the site in any particular time period. Uh, for many people, this will be their permanent home. Uh, we see people live and die in these, in these units, the, the rest of their lives in these units. Um, some people do graduate eventually, uh, and we do encourage that, but we don't use that as a success metric because the goal is for people to maintain housing stability, whether it's in, uh, a particular facility or whether, uh, it's in an independent unit, uh, elsewhere. Um, what we usually look for our primary success metric is housing stability, uh, housing retention rates. Uh, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, uh, usually asks for about an eighty-five percent retention rate in permanent supportive housing. So eighty-five percent of people are maintaining their housing. Our projects here in Marin have about a ninety-five percent retention rate. Uh, so that's one, that's the primary thing that we look at. Uh, we also are, um, very open to working with the Community Advisory Group to establish, uh, additional metrics that are of interest to this community. Um, other things that we have looked at in the past include access to increased income, uh, engagement in, um, services, whether that might be, uh, uh, employment services or education or whatever it might be. Uh, there are a number of things that we can look at.
Thank you very much. Uh, Catherine, did you have any other questions at this time?
At this time.
Mr. Mayor, can I have one follow-up question?
Sure, Scott.
Thank you. Uh, and this is for Ashley. Uh, A- Ashley, you were asked a question by Gabe, uh, about law enforcement. Uh, your response was that typically calls for law enforcement go down when somebody from homeless now is housed. Uh, my question for you is, what if it doesn't? And let's say somebody from this housing, you know, uh, this facility decides they want to smoke crack in the park. Um, that's not a violation of their lease. They're not going to lose their housing because of that. How, how do you deal with situations like that? And how can you assure the people who are living there and their kids are walking through that park to go to school every day, that this is not going to happen?
I want to be careful about, uh, inventing hypotheticals, uh, for a project that doesn't yet exist. Uh, that said, I do understand the concern that people have about, um, the activities of people who, uh, might be living in this facility. Uh, and if I can pass it to ECS to talk about exactly what that, um, process looks like, uh, for um, people who are violating the Good Neighbor Policy that ECS has in place for all residents, I think that would be, uh, helpful.
Please.
Excuse me. Hi, I'm Chris Calandrell. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for ECS. Um, the services we provide sort of have been broken down a little bit in this conversation, but Vice Mayor Paulson also asked about the services that, the, and the background, the, the experience that we ask for. Um, for that example specifically, if it's an illegal activity, it's an illegal activity. So the police can be involved. Um, we would have the CSS team, um, that's, that could respond if, if that's appropriate. Um, and, and sort of stop the behavior. That's not a hard, a hard part. The, the real work is when the person comes back into the program, uh, meeting with their case manager, meeting with, um, the behavioral health consultant or behavioral health clinician. Um, Vice Mayor Paulson asked about the site manager. The site manager is a twenty-four-hour position that's like the, it is the landlord, right? The site manager is the person that, that holds people accountable to the rules and also responds if there's fire or flood or other disaster on twenty-four hours. The folks that do the, the, the support services are the case managers, the, the behavioral health clinicians. Um, there'll be a program director and also a services site manager onsite as well. Um, and twenty-four hour desk service. So there would be someone to interface with that person, um, if necessary. But really, the work is what we do after they come back from the park or they come back from jail, because they will, and they do.
Right, so, so, so if I could, I ju, I just want to confirm that because the, the new residents are going to be tenants, and they're going to have the same rights that any other tenant has, you know, s, that scenario would not lead to an eviction. That scenario would lead to, you know, let's say they go to jail, they come back, they're back into their unit, and then there's support given to them to try to deal with their, uh, substance abuse issues. Is that accurate?
That is accurate. Um, ultimately, if it's happening in the park, it's probably happening in the building as well, and nuisance is a reason for eviction. Um, so we, we do take this seriously, and we take our, our, our neighbors by enjoyment of their, of their homes seriously as well. Okay.
Now, just add, we, we also have, have included both the Sheriff's Office and Central Marin Police on the Community Advisory Group. It's definitely our intent not to use that just as a stamp or just something we can say. We'd want to sit down with the police chief. We'd want to see what's happening. We'd want to review the data with him to see what changes or shifts we can make in the program design based on what he and his police are seeing. We're going to continue to engage with them, and tha, that's the process we envision. We're not going to come on the front end and have a line item budget for potential police interactions. It's not, but the answer to the que, that question is no.
Okay, and I'll, I'll reserve those for my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Um, all right, um, if there are no other council questions at this time, we'll move to public. Uh, questions from the public and, and, and comments as well. Allison, um, what I'd like to do is, we'll start with, uh, if, if we can ask people, how many people are in the queue? Is there a way to tell? We may.
The number is currently rising as we speak.
I'm sorry?
But the number is currently rising as we speak, but right now there's about fifty hands raised.
Okay, well, uh, let's start with, uh, two minutes per speaker. And, um, if somebody is, has made a point that you wish to make, uh, rather than repeat the point, please, uh, just, um, attach yourself to a previous speaker's comments, please. And what I'd like to do is see what we can accomplish. Uh, since this is really, uh, a discussion of the council as to whether we want to uh, prepare and send a comment letter to the county. Um, this is not about the project. Uh, Councilmember Harof.
Oh, just, just real quick, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, we have a lot of folks here. Would, would it be, uh, I think it would be appropriate for each of the public commenters at the beginning of their comments to state their name very clearly for the record, and also to state where they live.
Thank you very much. That's very helpful. Uh, very well, let's, uh, take the, uh, first speaker. Allison, would you please? And, and please state your name and tell us, tell us where you live.
My first comment will come from Diane Springfield.
Thank you. My name is Diane Springfield, and I live in Kent Fields. I am about a mile away from this project. Um, I have been attending Home Key forums for months with similar presentations with the same people. There's been no opportunity for the community to give an opposing presentation about the objections to this project. The more I have learned, the more concerned I have become. These forums are not a dialogue or a desire for community input. They have been the county telling us what they are doing. This project will be community-changing, and it's being rushed through because the home key funds are contingent upon moving fast. I'm here tonight to ask you to please publicly object to this project. The county is pushing the housing-first model onto our community without any real feedback or proper, proper safety measures being considered. Those who live in the vicinity should have a say as to what is the correct program for this location. Home key will be the, a housing-first model. Housing-first values choice not and only where to live, but whether to participate in services. For this reason, tenants are not required to participate in services to access or retain housing. In the housing-first approach, anyone experiencing homelessness should be connected with a permanent home as quickly as possible and remove requirements for sobriety or criminal history. Many in the community believe this approach leaves the community vulnerable to the negative impacts of chronic drug addiction and untreated mental illness. Not only is it unfair for the community, it is unfair for the people being housed under this model. Um, just like the residents of the Victory Village in Fairfax. Let's really help our most vulnerable by not just putting a roof over their heads, but by addressing the root causes of homelessness, mental health, and drug addiction with onsite mandatory involvement and treatment programs. Please don't let the county decide this for us. Please speak for us and give us your formal objection to this project.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Our next comment will come from Michelle. Good evening, everyone. Uh, can you hear me, please?
Yes.
My name is Michelle Sullivan. My husband Alan and I live in Kentfield. And I would like to let you know that we vehemently oppose this project. Um, I would urge City Attorney Woodruff to get involved on a legal basis to try to block this action. And, um, I, I do not want to belabor the point because And I, I do not want to belabor the point because there are a lot of speakers, but I would ask you please on the city council level oppose this project on the behalf of the constituents and the people who take safe routes to school, the seniors involved and everyone else in the Marin area. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Genevieve Crater.
Hi, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Hi, thank you so very much, Larkspur. You have been incredible, especially compared to how the county has really just shut us down. We are really very grateful for you to listen to us. So thank you so, so much. I want to just let you know that I am, again, Genevieve Crater. I live in Kent Field vehemently opposed to this site, to this program, to ECS. That they do not really have the great reputation that everybody seems to claim that they do, especially not in Granada. Victory Village is also a disaster. Bottom line is if you need to come back with funding for security, for a sheriff or anything like that, that is wrong for the neighborhood. And you should never do something like this. Your citizens do not want it and to try and shove it in. How dare you?
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Wendy Callan.
Welcome.
And Wendy, I'll ask you to unmute.
Sorry, I had a, a I had a hard time unmuting. I'm Wendy Callens. I'm the Program Coordinator for Safe Routes to Schools. And since the name of our program has been invoked many times in the discussion, I felt it important to to make this statement and clarify some things. Marin Safe Routes to Schools is a program of the Transportation Authority of Marin. We have not and will not take a position on this project. The Marin Safe Route Schools program never designates any traffic-related route as a safe route to school. The Safe Routes to Schools program provides suggested routes to schools mapping, but the program never declares that the recommended routes are either safe or unsafe. Use of the Safe Route Schools program name is not appropriate in garnering traction either for or against this project. And as mentioned on the Advisory Council, one of the volunteers for our program is participating, but the program itself is not part of that council. So I thank you. I wanted to make that clarification.
Thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be her from Joe C.
Hi.
Welcome. Hi.
My name's Joe Centeno. I live in Kent Field and I had something prepared, but I wanted to agree with Diane at the beginning. First off, I strongly oppose this project, but every meeting seems to start with a presentation that is, gives misinformation practically. Can we please have a presentation by one of the many experts who show that housing first does not work to give a balanced perspective? And an example of the misinformation is they say no sex offenders, but that is not true. Tier one and two sex offenders are allowed. So I'd like them to address that and hopefully I'm wrong. And if I am, I'm glad to be wrong. But I strongly oppose this project. It's, this project wants to use taxpayer dollars to house potential sex offenders with serious psychiatric issues and likely addiction issues with no mandated, no mandated treatment. It's a fifty-five year commitment with no recourse as a community. San Francisco uses the housing first model. ECS manages many of those properties. How could San Francisco possibly be considered a success? San Francisco is the national poster child of what not to do. Council members, I urge you to write a formal opposition to this and thank you for your leadership and for listening to me tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Would the county like to respond to the question that was kind of inferred in the, in that last speaker's comments regarding tier one and tier two offenders?
Either Gary or Ashley can answer that question.
Or I'm happy to take a stab at it first, if that's okay, Ashley. Awesome. So what the caller is referring to is that sex offenders are classified into three tiers by the state. Tier three is what's called a lifetime sex offender. As was clearly stated and correctly stated in the presentation, those types of sex offenders will not be permitted in the program. Tier one and two sex offenders constitute a variety of types of offenses, which can include numerous things. Some as simple as someone who was eighteen, who dated a sixteen-year-old and is now forty. To other more serious offenses. Folks who are currently under probation and have terms and conditions of that probation will be required to adhere as in conditions. Probation would be pleased to have an onsite place where they can meet with folks where they live, know where folks live at any given time and be able to engage with them regularly to ensure those terms and conditions are being adhered to. Not, if there are violations of their probation, that will be handled by probation or parole. And if someone is successfully adhering to the terms and condition of their probation, not violating any terms and conditions, successfully going through the intensive program that is required of sex offenders, turning their life, then, you know, that would be a success in this situation. But again, any, you know, person who violates any term or condition is subject to potential removal by probation or parole. And I think important to understand that oftentimes judges will put additional conditions in place for offenders such as not living in the vicinity of a park or a school, not living in the vicinity of the person that was the victim of their or similarly potentially situated folks. So those conditions would all be adhered to as well. And folks, for example, who are not allowed to live near a park or within a certain distance of a school, if that was within the limits of this project, those folks would not be permitted to enter the program either. So I think that, you know, we hear that this is an extraordinarily important issue for the community. We want to see success and safety of the residents in this housing as well as for the neighbors in the community. And there will be services and intensive services and supports for anyone that falls into that category. I think it's important not to utilize, you know, the straw person policy. You know, there are very few sex offenders who are homeless. It is important that, that, that folks have a stable place to and are getting all the services that they need, but the likelihood of this coming up is extraordinarily small. I know and I have listened to the concerns from the community that even a small chance is concerning to neighbors. And we would do everything possible to ensure success of all residents in the program and the safety of the neighborhood.
I can just chime in for a moment and add to that. I think it's, you know, the concern, I, I do understand people's concern. A mom of a young kid too. I get that. But also the, the chances that we have seen very, very few registered sex offenders ever come through our homeless system of care. It's not something that happens very frequently. Most, the vast majority of people who are homeless are not sex offenders. It's not, it's just, it, it happens to be really rare in our programming. And in addition to that, the way that people are assigned to permanent supportive housing in our system of care is through coordinated entry. And in coordinated entry, I think from the outside, it really looks like we just have this list of people and we send ECS some faceless names. And that's the people they have to put in there. They're strangers when they arrive. Because of the way our community works, partly because we're a small community and we're really close knit. We know the people who are at the top of our coordinated entry list. These are folks who have been engaged by outreach for a long time or have been at Ritter Center often on or, or are coming from shelter and know the shelter staff. We meet in case conference as a, you know, cross-agency group of folks who know the people in question to decide on the best housing placement for each person. And we don't make, we do everything that we can to make the, the most appropriate placement, both for the person and for the community. This isn't, this isn't a blind process by any means.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments, previous speaker. The next speaker, Allison.
Our next comment will come from Sarah C.
Hi, this is Sarah Centeno. I live in Kent Field. First, I would like to make very clear that my opposition to Project Home Key is not opposition to housing the vulnerable and disenfranchised sector of our society. On the contrary, it supports a more humane, dignified approach to the care for psychiatrically ill and drug addicted while protecting the sanctity of our towns. Opposition to this project is divorced from NIMBYs, YIMBYs and the political agendas of everyone else in between. Most of those opposed to this project realize redevelopment is essential to the maintenance of hu- human dignity and civil society. It's a chance to make housing more abundant and to reduce the concentration of poverty. It's a chance to make everywhere in California livable, walkable and beautiful. However, people suffering addiction and untreated mental illness living on the street are ill. They are not merely poor. Project Home Key, which espouses housing first as its model for the management of this population, falls far short from solving the problem of integrating this group of individuals. In two thousand and eighteen, the National Academies of Sciences, Engineering and Medicine published a review of the scientific literature of housing first. The conclusion was that on the basis of currently available research, the committee found no substantial evidence that permanent supportive housing contributes to improved health outcomes, notwithstanding the intuitive logic that it should do so and limited data showing that it does so for persons with HIV/AIDS. A study funded by Mark Benioff and conducted by Margot Kushel in Santa Clara done over a period of two years showed that even when healthcare services are provided, it does not change the number of deaths. There is substantial concern that housing first may even increase addiction and overdose deaths. Furthermore, Harvard medical experts published the results of a fourteen-year-long study of chronic homelessness placed in supportive housing in Boston. The study found that eighty-six percent of the homeless suffered from medical illness, mental illness and substance abuse. After ten years, only twelve percent of the homeless remained housed. The data that is repeatedly shared by the Board of Supervisors of the County Marin is a ninety-four percent success rate. That timeframe is much shorter than fourteen years. In short, there is plenty of evidence that the option presented to our community by Katie Rice and the Marin County Board of Supervisors would not achieve the goals set out by our community to both house and treat the population in need. In addition, California spent thirteen billion dollars on homelessness between two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and twenty. Over the next two years, San Francisco will spend one point one billion dollars. It is clear that with the current policies, the homeless crisis worsens as more money is spent. We need a better approach to this massive complex problem. Thank you.
Thank you. For those comments. Allison, the next speaker. And we're, we'd like to try to keep the comments two minutes, please.
Our next comment will come from Annie Prupas.
Hi, my name is Annie Prupas. I am a resident in Kent Field, but my children will likely go to public schools within their lifetime in the city of Larkspur. I just wanted to thank you guys for having us on the call today. I'm calling in opposition of this particular site for a project Home Key, given many of the reasons that we're all aware of that have been brought up so far. In addition to the, in addition to the scale of this project, fifty residents that are allowed two visitors per day and one overnight could potentially triple the occupancy to a hundred and fifty people with severe mental health and substance abuse issues. And that partnered with the fact that this is a fifty-five year commitment and has been completely rushed without any public buy-in and the fact that the city of Larkspur has no voice, but is going to be left picking up the pieces if this doesn't all work out. Along with any, with, with all the taxpayers is, is astonishing to our community. So I'm urging the city of Larkspur to formally oppose this project. More vetting needs to happen. Ken Shapiro said that as soon as the funding goes through, that the community advisory group is going to be meeting with local stakeholders. I don't know why the county would approve a project before they actually meet with law enforcement to determine if there's even proper funding out there based on the amount of residents that they're going to be housing here. So it just seems really backwards to the community. That the community advisory group is going to be put together to protect the community and that the, our board of supervisors isn't coming up with a proper plan if this is the exact type of high-risk population that they're planning to house here. There's, this is a family-oriented community and a child, there's child-centric pathways going to every single school. Over five thousand kids are within one point eight miles of this site. So it's irresponsible for anyone to think that this is the right site to house that population. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker, please.
Next will be from Alessandra Pagani.
Hi, my name is Alessandra Pagani and I am a resident of Greenbrier. I actually live on Via Casitas, only a few minutes walking from the project site. And I strongly support the proposal to convert twelve fifty-one South Aliso into permanent, permanent supportive housing. Permanent supportive housing is a proven and beneficial approach to address the needs of our most vulnerable community members. And I, I believe that the county has already proven its effectiveness at housing these formerly homeless individuals. And I'm confident that they will provide a safe and secure place for these folks to live. Many have always concerned about, concerns about the proximity of the site to schools. But I myself, and I am actually an educator and as someone who lives very close to the site, I am honestly far more reassured by having these folks housed at a permanent supportive housing site. Because this means they will have direct access to the services they need with onsite support and security, rather than to be left on the street untreated. So I think this will provide a far safer environment and lead to even more positive outcomes. So I would like to encourage my fellow neighbors and all of you to support the project and prove to others that we as a community are accepting and strive to improve the lives of our most vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Brian O'Connor.
Good evening. So first of all, I, I just, I'm so glad you're having this meeting to reiterate what others have said. And I'm, I'm kind of surprised and dismayed that it is at this point, one week before funding, that the city of Larkspur is getting to hear a presentation on something that's going to happen that's very much going to affect your jurisdiction. But it's very much the way these projects work is that I would also like to know, is one of my questions is how much county money has been spent to date with drawings and drawing offices and redrawing blueprints and setting up the sheriff's office. And there's a lot of money been spent so far when supposedly we're not sure we're going to get any money. We're really far down the road and I don't even know if there's an exit ramp or not. But I'm counting on the city of Larkspur. It's also not lost on me that the site that's chosen is, is in the unincorporated part of Marin, thereby skating around any city governments that might raise their hand and ask a question. Right as it sits right now, there's one government representative of the people who has a say in this. And I'm afraid that what happens at the Board of Supervisors is if that one supervisor's district is being affected and she's for it, that others are going to follow suit. So I urge all of you to at least say, let's pause this and look at the issues. Because not only is it forty-three people moving into Larkspur, they're allowed to have two visitors per day and one overnight visitor per room. And so with a population of less than twenty homeless in the area currently, we are blowing it up to forty-two and potentially nearing the hundred and fifty mark every day. So if we think that there won't be any need for services because it's only forty-three people who are very happily housed, we need to think about all their guests and visitors. And if you get two per day, but only one overnight and there's only, only bus service out of there is the twenty-nine out of Marin general, where do you think those people are going to end up? Those are my comments. Thank you.
Allison, the next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, will you clarify that this is in our jurisdiction? This is not a county parcel. The process is being run by the county, but it is indeed a Larkspur uh jurisdiction.
Mr. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, I think a lot of folks get confused because they see the Greenbrier zip code and they don't know that uh more than half of Greenbrier is in the city of Larkspur's incorporated boundaries, including this parcel. It is in the city. Um, and it's the nature of Project Home Key and a Project Home Key process that changes the jurisdiction with respect to planning and building review. And so that is why the city's uh participation in a project is more from the partnership of uh, we are going to have more residents living in this facility, and we want to make sure that we act appropriately as the agency that serves those residents.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a follow-up question about the uh, the guest policy?
Yes.
Uh, just for whoever's qualified to answer, we, we've heard a couple people comment that you're allowed two guests per day, one overnight guest. Uh, is there anything in the policy that would prevent somebody from having the same overnight guest every day for the next fifty years? You know, i- if, I mean, couldn't these one-bedroom, one-person, uh, you know, housing units all of a sudden become two person housing units? And, you know, that's just not a violation of the lease or any other regulations?
Yes, I think that's probably you, right?
Yeah, um, our current policy is twelve overnights in a month, and it really is intended to um deter, to, to make it impossible for people to have um resident rights as a guest. Um, so the resident is the only resident. Right. Um, also, there are, um, people's families often come. So if you look at the, the um guest policy, there are some parameters around children coming as guests and um how many children can be on the property. Um, so it, the, the impression is that the guests are, are a problem, but the guests are often people's parents and their, their aunts and uncles and their kids.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for those clarifications, and thank you for the questions. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Haroff has his hand raised.
Yes, Kevin.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt. Um, and thank you for those clarifying uh comments about the guest policy. I think that was very helpful and hopefully addresses some concerns. I just want to remind folks, the previous public speaker did not identify where he lived. Um, and I want to encourage um uh everyone who is speaking from the public tonight to please state their name clearly and to identify where they reside so that we can keep um aware of that. Thanks.
Uh, thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please. And um, just a uh kind of a checkpoint. What I, what I'd like to do is uh try to keep the meeting to uh ten o'clock as an uh ending time tonight, if possible. So just to, everybody, keep that in mind. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next speaker will be Stephen Chesley.
Hello, uh, I live on Alisio in Greenbrier. Uh, I'm a veteran. Anyway, uh, I deal with these people every day, and I see the pros and cons, and most of them are cons because, like you guys stated earlier, there is no mandated treatment for these people, so they can do whatever they want, and that's what makes it difficult for them to stay on task because they can do whatever they want. And uh, yes, all we're doing is housing them, and that's great. But if we don't have any mandated treatment for them, I think it's a mute point that it's just going to go awry, because I see it every day in the city of San Francisco when I work with them, with uh, with us, uh, plow, uh, swords to plowshares and all those uh Hud Bash people. And so that's my main concern. Thank you.
And this is his wife, Barbara, and we know that, you know, they have, they have the same kind of services available to them in San Francisco. And yet you, you can't keep them off the street. They're out on the streets, they're doing drugs, they're having sex in the streets. And um, these, these programs, it doesn't work. And this is not best practice. It's taking forty-seven addicts and putting them under one roof and thinking that somehow they're going to seek a sobriety and a healthy way of living. That is not best practice. We are definitely opposed to this uh project.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, uh, the next speaker, please.
Next speaker will be Cam.
Hi there, Cam Norgate here, resident of Greenbrier. Just calling in to oppose uh the project for all the great reasons outlined before. I would just like to kind of put things in, in perspective for folks that we're talking about putting a a, a mental health facility with severely mentally, severely mentally ill uh individuals right beside a number of uh parks and schools that are highly trafficked by both children and seniors. Every day I, I drive by and bike by there regularly, and I'm disappointed in the whole process that's taken place to date. And I really hope um uh that Larkspur can step up and really represent the people that I think are voicing um what is, I think, a very strong uh unified sentiment of the citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, uh, the next speaker, please.
Next, Kirsten Rittenbach.
Kirsten, I'll ask you to unmute. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you very much for taking my call. Um, I, my name is Kirsten Rittenbach. I live in Greenbrier, and I strongly oppose the Alisio project. Um, I really appreciate you taking my comments. I think that I, along with many, many people who have spoken tonight, am not opposed of trying to find a solution. But I think the project's location within um less than a mile of eight schools um and so many other reasons, um introducing uh dangers to our community without a lot of reassurances um that there's going to be proper vetting of the residents that are living there, that we would even have um proper security, any guardrails, any other um safety measures, and that it's been proposed and brought through at such.
I think we lost you there, Kristen, Kristen.
I think we've lost connection with this call.
Oh, sorry, can you guys, can you hear me? I'm so sorry. My AirPods are dying. Could you hear me still?
We can, we can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Um, uh, without uh enough time to really solicit uh community um engagement and involvement to come up with some real solutions, um, is, is horrific. Um, and I, I plead you guys all as council members um to really listen to us and take our concerns into consideration. Um, and I thank you very much for, for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Ira Levy.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, hi, thanks all. Uh, yeah, my name is Ira Levy. I reside not only in Greenbrier but on South Alisio Drive, the opposite end of the, of the road where it nearly dead ends to the, to the lovely walking path. I want to um add my, my name as opposed to the um, the, the, the project as, as now defined. Not to say that I'm opposed to some other way to implement something that has more opportunity to succeed. As other people have pointed out, um, the, the population apparently eligible for this, for this project seems to me the most chronic, the chronically homeless, long-term homeless, therefore most problematic population. Um, so in a, in a, I'm a senior. We, we've talked about um, you know, risk to children. What about risk to seniors? I walk that path nearly every day, and it's lovely. I think if, if we were to, I understand the, the advantages to that site. The, the, the building is already there. It conceivably could be renovated. Maybe choose up a different population of, of candidates who want to change their lives, not merely put a roof over they had with, of, of people who are chronically homeless and have no incentive or desire to change their behavior. So choose either a, a different population for that location and/or for the locate, for the population currently under consideration. Put them to another site where there's no, or less impact to, to families, children, and seniors. Thanks.
Allison, the next speaker, please.
Aubrey. Hi, this is Aubrey Lay. I live one mile from the site in Kent Field, uh, and I'm appo- opposed to this project. All of the community calls have had this highly controlled narrative. Ironically, like you just saw again today with Ken and Gary's initial presentation, community forums they tout have had, have closed the chat and kept people's real questions private. They've only been answering the questions they want to, which is not transparent. My biggest concern is that this is fiscally irresponsible, and there is no accountability to the Board of Supervisors. For example, consolidated reporting for this location should go beyond just housing stability. They should report anonymously, if they have to, on residents' mental health, sobriety, and lease violations, as well as reporting on community complaints. It is a fifty-five-year program with no recourse should it completely fail. There are no clear rules on what constitutes a lease violation. Exactly what number of violations should require of an eviction versus how they say it, which is multiple lease violations can be cause for eviction, which is actually quite a different statement. How they will document and report on community complaints, and even whether the community safety services team that they tout all the time will be in place and funded for the entirety of this project. The guest policy is currently two guests and twelve overnight guests per month. That is unacceptable. There's this facade that they are creating, that they are involving the community and keeping people informed, but they are not seeking any real feedback from key constituents before their approval, like law enforcement, schools, the park service, or any of the community leaders like you all. Please oppose this project until they get the details right. Thank you for making yourselves available to hear us tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next speaker, caller ending one four zero two.
Uh, Ja- James Holmes, uh, Larkspur. Larkspur currently has one homeless facility in a residential uh neighborhood with a vetted uh clientele. It works well and has community support. That is the type of facility which is appropriate for this neighborhood, not the quasi-asylum being proposed. Unfortunately, that proposal will house not the down-on-their-luck, but the insane, the addicted, and the convicted. Unlike standard home key projects, it is not in a motel, which is typically in a residential area, and it will cost not the usual twenty thousand dollars per year uh per person, but thirty-four to forty thousand. Thus, the project puts more challenging and costly clients into a more vulnerable neighborhood. Yes, there are four layers of safeguards, but uh the question is whether uh those suffice in light of other factors, such as seriously ill or addicted persons can come and go at will. They need not accept services or stay sober. Seriously mentally ill people often go off their meds because they don't recognize their illness and the overnight guests. In light of these factors, plus what we read, for us to assume that this project could avoid San Francisco-style street disorder and substance abuse on South Alisio would be truly the triumph of hope over experience, to use Samuel Johnson's phrase. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Diana Hedrick.
Hi, thank you very much for taking my call tonight. I really appreciate all of you doing this. Um, I, my, my name is Diana Hedrick, and I live in Greenbrier, and I oppose this location. And I, um, you know, essentially, I'm echoing everyone else who has already spoken. Um, you know, there's obviously so much going on with this, but I'd really like to focus on, you know, the children, obviously, the senior citizens. Um, and these are really unrepresented groups that we need to protect. I know there are a bunch of people on this call. I think you had mentioned there were two hundred and fifty people. I know um probably half of those people on the call would like to speak but are unable to, who are on the call specifically because they oppose it. And so I'd like you guys to take into consideration, you know, all of the people who are opposing this um and just your due diligence um with this. And if we can spend money, if we have disposable income, let's put that money to funding all of the schools within this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Hana Stansik. Hana, I'll ask you to unmute. I'll ask you to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Hana Stansik. I live in Kent Field. I have eight-years-old chicks and four-years-old children. They are going to school in Kent Field and Larkspur. I'm very concerned about this issue, and I have a hard time sleeping sometimes because of this. I'm really, really upset, and I feel not right using tax money to put us unsafe environment. So please, uh, leaders, listen to our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Nancy. Nancy, I'll ask you to unmute.
Hi, Nancy.
Yes, my name is Nancy Riley, and I live in South Alisio. Um, I want to declare my opposition to this project as it presents a high risk of disturbances to the senior community. Residents of the area, next to a city park surrounded by medical buildings, where many patients come to appointments during the course of the day. Many young people and children walk South Alisio Drive on their way to school. Teenagers run the street training for rowing at the Cormadera Creek pertaining to the Redwood High School teams. And young families with their baby strollers also get their outdoor exercise. I urge you to consider all the more appropriate venues for this type of project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Allison. Uh, the next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Alicia.
Good evening. My name is Alicia Albin, and I'm a resident of Kent Field, and I am opposed to this specific program at this specific site and this specific home key process or lack thereof. I want to thank you for taking the time to agendize the matter. It has felt very rare in this process to have felt heard, and for that I am grateful. I started out very supportive of this project, then I asked questions, then I had concerns, concerns which remain unresponded to and frankly ignored. So now I am here pleading, pleading with you as the guardian of this site and the body most representative of this community. Each presentation seems to change in the information that's divulged. We need a process of genuine collaboration. We need su- success metrics that expand beyond retaining their housed status and those, and metrics regarding residents' physical and mental health, employment, and overall vitality. And where are the metrics for success for our community? A fifty-five-year commitment without county, county ownership, with no meaningful success metrics for the residents or community, and no funding or input by the city, for the city of Larkspur is irresponsible. Just as it has been so difficult for me to personally land on this position, sometimes issues merit making hard decisions and going against the grain. I implore you to show leadership and take a position in, in support of your city and its residents and against this location for Project Home Key. It is through actions like these that our counties, cities, and agencies and communities can be brought to, back to the drawing board, collaborated with, and into a collaborated with, and into a trust, place of trust to begin the hard work towards real solutions. Please give us a voice and object to this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next is Shannon Collins.
Hi, this is Randy and Shannon Collins. We live in Larkspur in the Creekside neighborhood and we are directly across the creek from this site. And we oppose this in the strongest possible terms. First of all, because the process has been a farce and ECS has been spectacularly disingenuous. They didn't engage the community. They hired a PR firm. And, and as many people have said here tonight, they haven't answered questions. They've dodged them. I don't need experts to tell me that it's a bad idea. I would never raise my kids and say, no matter what you do, no matter what crimes you commit, what drugs you do, no matter how you behave, no matter what you do, I will house you and I will feed you. That's not how we raise our kids. And this idea has already demonstrated itself to be an utter and colossal failure. All you have to do is go to the Tenderloin of San Francisco. The deaths are skyrocketing. And if you go talk to the people in the business, they're talking about how successful they are. Well, go talk to the EMTs and the firefighters who are scraping up the overdose dead people off the streets. It's not successful. If I were trying to open a hamburger stand, or God forbid, the Amy's drive-through that took two years to get approved, I, I would not be given this platform. And I really am grateful for the opportunity. This is the first meeting that feels like, like someone's listening to reason. And I encourage you, the leaders of Larkspur, to just step back and say, does this make sense? ECS has come out of nowhere. They hired a PR firm and they're trying to ram this thing down on Larkspur. And let's go to, let's take a field trip to the Tenderloin, see how it's going, and let's not bring that to Larkspur. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Kevin Carroll.
Good evening and thank you. First off, I'd like to compliment the city manager on his staff report. I found it very concise and enlightening. I live in Greenbrier within Larkspur's jurisdiction and I'm the father of a homeless adult who lived in Marin. I've been dealing with homeless issues in regard to him for over 25 years. And I've had to deal with the system, as you might call it, both here in Marin and San Francisco, and the comparisons are totally inappropriate. Marin is a much different environment than San Francisco and comparing the two is beyond ridiculous. I will comment though, well-meaning, I've been to all of these meetings. And the problem is, is they're generally, the presenters are people from the social service agencies and Marin housing. What's missing are people from the Marin County District Attorney's Office, the public defenders, the mental health court, which we have just started a few years ago, the sheriff's department, and the local police agencies. These are the questions people are asking about and these are the people who deal directly with the homeless, usually before they get involved with the mental health system and the county agencies. There have been homeless shelters in this county going back to 25 years. Homeward Bound in Nevada, the old Armory, the churches and synagogues that used to put people up. And these are the experts, you know, what is, what was the crime like in those areas before those places were established? And what are they like now? And they're the ones who should be commenting on this. I think they might have, be much more qualified than just the county people. Last but not least, my son would not qualify for this housing. He's out of compliance with his probation and he hasn't been following the instructions of his impact team, which is a county agency helping him. He's leaving his car tonight about a half a block from his elementary school that he went to 25 years ago in Janor Bell. He's going to court tomorrow morning to have his probation revoked and probably be remanded. So I'm very familiar with the type of people that would qualify for this housing. I know them. I've had to deal with them in dealing with my son's problems. And most of these people are victims who will be helped tremendously by getting them away from the predators that are in the homeless community. The predators aren't going to want to live in a supervised environment. The people who use drugs, who are sex offenders, they don't want anyone looking over their shoulder. The people who are going to live in this structured environment are people who are victimized on the streets. And I think that is the issue that's not being addressed. So I urge you to ask the county to get the criminal justice representatives involved with this and present us, just as you do with the budget, get the facts. What are the numbers? We can't deal with this on an emotional basis. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Michael Thomas.
Hello, my name is Michael Thomas. I live in Kentfield. I have three school-aged kids. One at basic, one at Kent, and one at Redwood. For the past 18 months, I've been overseeing the management of an apartment building that our company owns, which houses about 70 single people that were formerly homeless. Our building also houses students, working professionals, and families with kids. Admittedly, I was pretty nervous when we began accepting formerly homeless people into the building. Most of the folks that have moved in are older, many using walkers or in wheelchairs and a lot of military veterans. It has definitely not been without hiccups. We've had a few bathtub overflows and laundry room disputes. However, I am seeing lives changed. I see our students interacting with people that used to sleep on the street. I see kids in our building smiling at their neighbor who used to live in a homeless shelter. And contrary to some issues raised about South Aliso tonight, there has not been an increase in crime on our block as a result of these 70 people moving in. If South Aliso is lucky enough to get this Home Key funding, which I know is incredibly competitive, I hope to bring my kids there to volunteer and show them that we help to make a difference. Thank you and good luck.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Natalie Wong.
Hi, my name is Natalie Wong. I'm a resident of Kentfield. We are very supportive of trying to solve the homeless situation, but I have very grave concerns about the unwillingness to address the very serious concerns of our community about the safety of this particular site in housing chronic homeless people without oversight of their sobriety or drug use, without oversight of the sexual tier-one, tier-two sexual predators who might reside there, who would be allowed into this facility. And without the oversight of any kind of chronic or their oversight of their chronic mental issues that will arise. And I don't think, without addressing these issues before approving something that could detrimentally affect our community for 55 years, that it is wise to jeopardize the children who will be exposed to these types of, to these types of environments. I don't think that it is, I don't think that it is unwise to take a step back and to ask the county to address our issues. We have had many, many Zoom calls with County Supervisor Rice to address our very deep concerns. And we have not been given any specific, specific resolutions to our questions. And we really hope that as, as council members, addressing the concerns of our constituents, that you can see that we, we are open to housing people with homeless situations. But can we please address putting appropriate people into this facility where we don't jeopardize the safety of our children in a very small community? There are two main outlets to this facility. It is Sir Francis Drake and McNolia. How do you expect our children to go to these eight schools without any kind of protection for any of the people who might be housed in these facilities for 55 years? They don't even have funding guaranteed to have, to protect these people and our children for 55 years.
Natalie, could you please wrap your comments up?
Yes. So please, I am imploring you to take a step back and please look at this facility and make sure it is appropriate for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, sorry, just to interject, I just wanted to give you a heads up. There's still about 43 people with their hands up. It's 9:15. I know you said you were trying to wrap this up by 10:00.
Well, we have a, a traditional cutoff of our meetings at 10 o'clock. If we need to continue the meeting, we'll, we'll, I guess we'll talk about it.
Okay.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Next will be Bjorn Stansik.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay, I want to thank you, the city of Larkspur, for giving us a voice. It's really appreciated and I commend you on showing some spine. I live in Kentfield, three young kids. I am vehemently opposed to the combination of the site and population. And I've also been very disappointed by the extremely misleading and one-sided information that the county has put out. Whenever they have spoken, it's always been that everything is working. There's been no critical thinking in terms of what could go wrong. And there is a website called FriendsOfSafeRouts.com where you can get a more balanced opposing view. So again, that's FriendsOfSafeRouts.com. I agree with the people who have spoken opposing the project. It's been a very controlled narrative. We haven't gotten answers. There's a lot of issues. I won't regurgitate those. But drugs is, is one of them. A lot of these people will be users. With users comes supply. And with supply comes contagion to, to our kids. And, and also drugs are not free and these people don't have incomes. So where are they going to get the money to fund their drug habits? So that, that's a crime concern and the police is, is not seeing this as something that they can handle. So I, I just think the realism is lacking and there's a lot of adjectives that are dressing this up. But the reality is what, what it is and it's really disturbing how willing the county is to take risks, risks with our children to score political points. They make comments like straw person fallacy. Well, you know, I'd, I'd say whitewashing fallacy. Everything is wonderful. Everything's going to be great until it isn't. And, and their comments like, well, the, I think that most homeless people are not a sex offenders. Well, but most people who go on airplanes, they don't carry bombs. Does that mean we don't need the TSA? Thank you very much.
Allison, the next speaker, please.
Dave Crater.
Hi, my name's Dave Crater. I'll go quickly here. I live in Kentfield and this is the first meeting I've attended and I appreciate you guys listening to us and it sounds like there's resounding opposition. I'm against Project Home Key. You know, as the father of a nine-year-old, I'd vote against proactively recruiting 50 homeless and sex offenders to the area surrounded by young innocent children. So I'll stop there. I think one question I would just ask is, you know, does this increase the probability of sexual offense to these kids? And if the answer is yes, then we should be looking for a different location. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Mike.
Hello.
Hi, welcome, Mike.
Hi.
Can you tell us your name and where you live?
Yep, Mike Geisberger from Greenbrier and I'll be brief. I think just a different perspective. The county is promoting the Housing First approach. And at full capacity, 43 of 1,034 people identified will be provided housing. That's just 4%. 96% will continue to experience homelessness. Using available funds to service only 4% of the identified population is completely contradictory to the core principle of this model. 4%. Thank you very much for taking the time to, to provide this forum.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Laura Derman-Wallian.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Hi, my name is Laura Derman-Wallian. I reside in Greenbrier where I actually grew up. I'm wholeheartedly opposed to Project Home Key. I walk with my 83-year-old father almost every day on South Aliso and have no doubt in my mind that this facility would have long-term damage on our community. To be clear, I'm not coming from a place of not in my backyard, but this site truly needs to be reevaluated and reassigned to a different location. As many other folks have said tonight, and it's a fact, eight schools in the immediate proximity of this potential site, 1.8 miles to be exact. I've also felt that ECS and some members of this forum are a bit out of touch with the significant damages will cause the citizens of our community, largely made of seniors and children alike. I, at the very beginning tonight, right when we started around 7:30, Ashley had made, had made a comment about, you know, inventing hypotheticals. And I just wanted to kind of comment on that real quickly. We're not, there's nothing to invent here. The data is transparent. Victory Village must ring a bell. And we do invite you to revisit Safe Routes Marin for a lot of detailed information on this topic. But you may call it inventing hypotheticals, but we as a community call it a host of misinformation, unanswered questions and some imbalanced perspective. Whether you are a parent or a senior, you're wired to be proactive when it comes to the overall safety and well-being of yourself and your loved ones. In my opinion, one sex offender is too many sex offenders. Thank you for your time.
Allison, the next speaker, please.
Lisa Levitt.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of the project. My name is Dr. Lisa Levitt. I live in Larkspur. I'm a physician at Marin Community Clinics where I've worked for the past 25 years. The project at 1251 South Aliso is a truly unique opportunity to provide housing stability and improved health outcomes for medically vulnerable individuals. It hasn't come up at this meeting tonight, but we know that many of our unhoused are seniors with chronic illness. And those who die on the streets often die from untreated chronic illness. Marin Community Clinic has two clinic sites in walking distance of this proposed Home Key site, directly across the street and on 5 Bonner Road. Patients will have access to primary healthcare specialty services as well as a pharmacy. We are a team of doctors, nurses, social workers, and care navigators who care for complex medically fragile patients. Our behavioral health providers include psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers, and recovery specialists. We can get to success on this project. I refer you to our letter of support from our CEO, Dr. Mitesh Popat. on the website. And I thank you for your support of this project.
Thank you for attending and your comments, Allison. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Mary Denton.
Good evening. My name is Mary Denton and I live in Larkspur. I'm calling in to voice my strong support for the proposed project. And I encourage the City of Larkspur to provide a letter to the Marin County Board of Supervisors regarding its support. I, I agree. I'll be brief here. I also emailed some longer comments, but I'll be brief now. I agree with the very thoughtful comments by Alessandra Pagani, who I thought spoke very compellingly about why this project is, is positive. Marin County is not the tenderloin and the success of the Housing First model in support of housing in Marin is superb. I would say that a four-year track record with a ninety-five percent retention rate that the county has is an excellent record and it reflects what's going on here in Marin County. Chronic homelessness is our community's problem. Our failing to provide adequate, safe and stable housing could easily result in the proliferation of impromptu tent encampments that very quickly become endemic, which we've seen in Sausalito at Dunphy Park, now relocated to Marinship and in Novato at Lee Gerner Park. I also don't think that's what we want for our community. These communities have learned the hard way that they can't just mandate away these encampments because of federal law that prohibits that. So I think I'm asking the, the council members to do the right thing. We need to look beyond unfounded misconceptions, fears and overreactions. And we need to have the compassion to support twelve fifty-one South Aliso. Thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Next will be Jess.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Hi Jess, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jess Lerner. I live in Fairfax. And I know I do not live in Larkspur, but I waited all this time because this issue is so important and I wanted to speak on it. I just want to start by thanking Kevin Carroll, who spoke earlier, who I do not know, but who spoke about his homeless son and gave a realistic viewpoint of how to look at this project and how to look at the situation. And I just want to state that I've heard a lot of different comments. I have a lot of compassion for the community that's speaking up and has a lot of fears. And I just want to remind us that homeless folks are people like you and me. Homelessness can happen to anyone. It does not automatically make someone a drug addict or a sex offender and it's not. And we have also heard a lot of refuting of those concerns addressed and hopefully will be continued to be addressed. A lot of times, as was stated, homeless folks are victims who need the help and who are trying to get away from being victims. If you've ever met someone who's homeless or worked with homeless folks, you or built relationships or been friends with anyone who's been on the street, you might have a sense of that. And for example, I know someone who's a mother with medical issues who rides the bus all night just to have somewhere to sleep, but who formerly lived in Marin. A lot of the people who would be housed here potentially would be former Marin residents who found themselves in a situation where they're houseless. So this is also an equity issue. We are so luckily, lucky to have immense privilege in this county. We also have a lot of white privilege and there's a lot of discrimination happening in this situation. And this is an opportunity. It's an amazing opportunity to shift our thinking, to provide real change in housing and less suffering and create a more safe, stable and equitable community. And I just wanted to say there's a lot of fear versus fact. I sent you guys a letter that has this fact sheet and I hope the community has access to this as well. And it, I, I don't know how much time I have left, but I just wanted to state that the number one fear I hear is risk to children. I'm a teacher. I love children. I want to protect children. And homelessness is not due to a character flaw that makes someone dangerous. And it's not necessarily going to be this risk to children that people are assuming it is. And I think it's important to look at all the facts, as other people have said, and look at what the risk actually is and understand it more fully and understand the management and process more fully of what would actually happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Be Dave Kay.
My name is Dave Cantor. I live in Larkspur, California. Zip code nine four nine three nine. I'm here tonight to voice my support for the Home Key project proposal for Larkspur in South Aliso Drive. I would like to start by encouraging everyone who's listening. There was a National Academy of Sciences article in twenty eighteen that was mentioned by an earlier speaker in opposition to the project. I encourage everyone to read it because it actually, and I quote this directly, urges HHS and HUD to work with nonprofit and philanthropic organizations and state and local governments to increase the supply of permanent supportive housing. That's how successful it's been. The homeless aren't criminals and homelessness is not a crime. I'm awfully surprised by the gross assumptions I've heard tonight about the people who will move into this facility. I'm surprised to hear a city council member raise the specter of smoking crack in the park so soon after publicly vowing a pledge to the idea of liberty and justice for all. These are free people and we live in a free country. Your friends and neighbors are not required to work on their own issues with mental health or substance abuse. Your friends and neighbors don't have their visitors monitored or vetted. The people who will move into this facility are not people who are required to do so as a form of punishment. These are people who are trying to better themselves and to move ahead. And we should support them and laud them and do whatever we can to help them. I've seen firsthand the benefits of Housing First programs when I lived in New York City. And I followed its success as it's now being done in Colorado. And the program in Colorado Springs has been held up as a national example of a productive, proactive solution with great results. I want to be a part of that. I want to see us stand for that as a community. Why can't we bring the kind of praise Colorado Springs is receiving right here to California? It seems to me that due to its wealth, location and considerable brain power, Marin County is uniquely poised to become a state and nationwide leader for community projects aimed at the less fortunate. What better way to fulfill our purpose to repay the opportunities all of us have been given? And what better example can we set for our communities and our children? Thank you all very much.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Kevin Hagerty. Kevin, I'll ask you to unmute. I see that Kevin's unmuted, but we're unable to hear him.
Kevin, welcome. We'll come back to Kevin if we have time. The next speaker, please.
Next will be Timothy Howard.
Good evening. My name is Emily Howard. My husband and I live in Larkspur. My understanding for tonight's meeting is that the city council is going to consider whether to authorize the mayor to send a letter to the Board of Supervisors commenting on the proposed project. I would like to ask that the city council send a letter to the Board of Supervisors expressing the concerns that have been shared tonight, including a number of areas of mitigation that I feel need to be addressed. I'll briefly speak to three and I know my husband would like to speak briefly as well. I would like to request that the city and the county develop a cooperative agreement for serving the property. Cooperative agreement would help us address and plan for the impact to our city services. I also would like to ask the Episcopal Community Services to provide a report to our Board of Supervisors with a list of any code violations at any of their existing and pre-existing properties in the Bay Area that might include health violations, capacity violations, public nuisance, et cetera. And finally, on my part, I'd like to ask what would happen if Episcopal Community Services decides to no longer operate this project? Such as what took place in twenty twenty with the next door shelter in San Francisco. And I'll refer quickly to my husband.
Good evening, Dr. Tim Howard. My opposition is to the fact that the exemption with CEQA, I don't think it qualifies for an EIR negative declaration. I think it warrants SFA Conservation Development Commission to take a look at this. I'm concerned about the wildlife, drainage soil stability and habitat atmosphere. Furthermore, I also believe that that unit should be maintained as a medical facility that would be for our seniors. If you gave twenty-five million to Marin General Hospital today, they can do some incredible things for our senior population and convalescent care population. Thank you for your time and your volunteer service to the community and everyone else who spoke this evening.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
This is Teresa Ward.
Good evening, Mayor Hillmer, members of the council, Episcopal Community Services and other attendees. I am a Greenbrier resident since nineteen eighty-five. I support the county's proposal to convert twelve fifty-one South Aliso to permanent supportive housing. I, I walk on South Aliso. It's very nearby where I live, less than three blocks. I walk it all the time. I am very much in support. And as Dr. Lisa Levitt had said, there already is Marin Community Services right within walking distance of there. And I certainly have not seen any problems. In my opinion, we together as members of this county can make a difference to help alleviate our region's homeless crisis, preventing tent encampments. And hopefully the people who did have concerns this evening, who felt they weren't being heard or railroaded through this project without their support, that they will be heard. I want to thank each of you for taking the time to consider this proposal and urge the council and residents to support this project so we can provide a meaningful, long-term opportunity for our county's most vulnerable. Thank you very, very much.
Allison, the next speaker, please.
Mary Nahorniak.
Hi, my name is Mary Nahorniak and I was a resident of Larkspur for much of last year. I still live quite nearby on the east side of San Anselmo. I've corresponded with Larkspur City Council members and with Supervisor Rice on this issue. I've submitted public comment to a number of these meetings in support of Project Home Key. I'm doing so again tonight. I urge you as a council not to oppose this project. Like many folks on this call, I have young children, both of whom are in school in Larkspur. One, I take on her route to and from school, often on bike twice a day, just nearby where this facility would be. I look forward to greeting those folks and talking to that child about this facility and how we support all of our neighbors. Yes, people have questions and concerns. Let's get them heard. Let's get them answered and keep the issue open. Instead of the city of residents opposing the facility, the people who are currently homeless, who this effort would serve, have had the odds stacked against them for what is likely most of their lives. A letter that opposes them joining our community is one more statement that others them. And it makes them feel like society has cast them aside, to use the language of one formerly homeless man. It sets the exact wrong tone. Further, I find the assumptions made during this meeting about these future residents to be dismaying, dangerous, dehumanizing and just that, assumptions. I very much appreciate the recent comments from the father of an unhoused person as well as the physician and the person who's been managing an apartment complex who has seen lives changed. Homelessness and housing are a serious issue in our county and in our state, and this project addresses both. I urge the council again to work on behalf of all residents, including the forty-plus new ones at twelve fifty-one South Aliso, who I will welcome as neighbors.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Erica McGrath.
Hi, thanks. This is Erica McGrath from Kentfield, one mile from the site. Matt and I have been part of the Greenbrier Kentfield community since nineteen ninety-nine. We have four children. They've all attended Ross Valley Nursery School, Basij Kent and now Redwood. We are not in favor of the project. It's the wrong location for all of the ones discussed. I'll try to add some new comments below. I know I'm following a lot of supporters. So I want to give a perspective of raising our four kids in this community with the same sentiment that it is absolutely not illegal to be homeless. I spent years down at the rest shelter for women, providing, serving, sharing, eating dinner side by side with homeless women. I've, we've raised our children to have empathy for homeless people and to, to take that into their life to, to help address homelessness. I will tell you from having boots on the ground, and this is not hypotheticals. I've been in situations where women are having psychiatric, psychiatric breakdowns. And one person cannot handle the situation and these are women who are clean for twenty-four hours. I've sat there right next to them while they're trying to be helped. So I just want to address that because I think that there's been a lot of sort of NIMBYism comments from people who have just been in support saying, you know, we need to help these people, but I really think we need to go back to some of the statements that were made at the top of the hour. That this facility is for chronically mentally ill people. And the presenters actually said that they don't have the funds to provide services for that population. It's far too dangerous to have this facility be rushed. We should be working together as a community, have transparent, open and honest conversations about how to really honestly address homelessness in our community, get people involved. I've been in this community since ninety-nine. We're so involved. I'm just hearing about this in the last week. It's not a transparent, open process. And the taxpayers who live here and will pay for this should be very involved in true solutions to our homeless issue. Finally, I work with a high school group of young men who volunteer in the community. We have reached out to try and help the Sausalito Marinship Park residents. We've been told due to the extreme violence there and the fact that the area has now become a meth addiction location, our high school young men are not safe and able to go. I am trying really hard with these high school boys to get them out, helping the homeless. And the facts of the matter are that many do turn to drugs and alcohol and violence. So not having the proper support to really help the mentally ill that need services at that location is just not doing justice to this group that we really desperately do need to help and serve. So I urge you to write a letter against this project until it can be planned properly. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Chris Wheaton.
Hi, Chris Wheaton. I live in Rose Lane in Larkspur. Thank you for the, taking the time on the feedback. I've written to numerous people about this issue and have only really received a response, other than a form response from Gabe Paulson. So Gabe, thank you for your, for your response. I'm opposed to the project. Not that I'm opposed to housing the unhoused, but I don't think that this type of project with the residents that are planned there is the appropriate one for a family neighborhood. When I first learned about the project, I sat through the presentation that was done. I do think it was very one-sided in the sense there was no opposition presentation. There's really no opportunity for Q and A. I then wrote to the project website and got a response back from Zach Frieden. And my main questions were, you know, is there, are there going to be restrictions on people living there that have felony convictions for violent crimes, that have convictions for mental illness where they've committed violent crimes? And the response was that, no, there, there is not going to be restrictions that legally they cannot restrict those folks out of the program. And that's where I really started to become concerned about the program and the fact that this is in a family neighborhood and with both seniors and a route for kids to walk to school. It just became not the right project for that neighborhood. I also have concerns about the Community Advisory Board, that there's no budget for it, there's no power to enforce, there's no authority. It's an advisory board. It's not a governing board. And I found that there was a lot of discussion about that as, as if that was the, the silver bullet. I would like to just ask a question of someone on the project, if they can confirm that people with violent histories have felony records or that have mental illnesses where they have had violent episodes, like to confirm that, that they would not be screened out of the project.
Well, let's get an answer to that question.
Debbie. Generally, we've talked about sexual offenses, had infanitem tonight. Beyond arson, that's, that's, those are the two things that we take into consideration in the background here. And these, these, um, the parameters go through the Housing Authority. So the Housing Authority has federal requirements and I would urge you to look up what the federal requirements are for the, the Housing Authority vouchers. and I would urge you to look up what the federal requirements are for the Housing Authority vouchers.
All right, thank you.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't really understand that, the answer. The question, the question was, if you could just confirm that somebody with a felony history for violence or mental illness with violent episodes, if they would be screened out of the project? I think you're saying, no, they would not be screened out of the project, but I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly.
It's a bit more complicated than that because of the Housing Authority requirements that Chris just mentioned. The Housing Authority does have requirements that, that, some of them federal, some of them local, that don't allow people with certain criminal histories to have access to a voucher. The, generally speaking, we are not, we do not have a blanket prohibition on people with certain criminal histories accessing housing through one of our projects. But it's more complicated and just, we won't screen those folks out.
I hope that is helpful information. Scott, did you want to have any follow-up to that?
No, I mean, I still don't understand. You know, and maybe I do need to look it up and summarize it and, you know, relate it to our constituents, but I I think people are kind of asking, what do those regulations say? Can you tell us, is it if someone's a three-striker? I mean, what exactly does that mean? And it sounds like either it's too complicated to explain on a, in a 30-second answer, or that we really don't know and we have to look it up. And I guess we just have to be okay with that.
An opportunity for follow-up with the council and our letter to the board of supervisors. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Irving Torres. Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. My name is Irving Torres, and I work for All Home, which is a regional organization that's advancing regional solutions that disrupt the cycles of poverty and homelessness in the Bay Area. I'm here this evening, today, to urge the City Council to support the county's proposal for Liso into permanent supportive housing, because this is the most effective strategy to care for our most vulnerable homeless neighbors and to give them stability. There was a research that was conducted by UCSF Benihoff in late 2020, which talked about the effectiveness of providing permanent supportive housing for chronically homeless individuals. It also mentioned that the cost of serving the highest need homeless individuals living on the streets far exceed the cost of connecting them to permanent housing. Housing is safety, and housing is medicine. And finally, I just wanted to emphasize and to thank each of you for taking the time to consider this item, and once again, urge the City Council and the residents to support this project. Larkspur is going to be a better place to live when everyone has a home, and helping people who are experiencing homelessness leads to safer and cleaner streets and healthier communities. Thank you for your time.
Allison, before we take the next speaker, I'd like to say we're going to stop the public comment in 10 minutes. That will allow our staff to give a summary of what we've heard this evening. And then we'll have a council discussion about next steps, whether it be a letter, continuing the meeting, et cetera. So just a heads up, it's 9:47 now, and in 10 minutes, we're going to stop the public comment and ask for staff to give us a summary. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Hi, this is Darren Klein. Yep, Darren Klein. I live at Corte Real and South Aliseo. So I'm in the neighborhood. I, there's been a lot of comments said. I know with only having two minutes to speak, a lot of people love to throw in some snarky comments or make people feel bad about how they feel in this situation. And I really, you know, the real kind of issue here is, is this the right kind of facility? And we would love to have communication in our neighborhood of what are the other options that we could do if people feel this isn't the best option? I, I definitely think that you shouldn't send a letter supporting this. And we need to actually sit down and have a conversation. And this is what's getting me about this community. This community, the way I've seen it, we've always been able to have a conversation. And this pops up on October 21st. You had a presentation. That's when I started hearing about it. You have a community group that you've created where the forums had to be in by November 18th. There is no public declaration of who is on that committee by name. I can't find it online. I don't understand the lack of communication in such a short time period. And the thing is, in this community, we get the same thing with College of Marin. When they want to put in garbage cans and recycling centers, they wait until the last moment so they can sneak something in, and then we have to run to our elected officials and have this conversation. We're not against having and being part of the solution. But I do think we're against, when you take a facility, you put it on South Aliseo, which is near where we have our low-income housing already. So let's just shove everybody in one part of the, of the place and not tell anybody about it so we can pass it quickly. That is what I have an issue with. I don't have a problem with the facility there. I have a huge problem when you put a big fence around it and you have guards walking around. Maybe we could talk about it and make it look different so our kids won't even be afraid of it as they're going by it. But we don't have that option, because everybody has decided we're going to cure homelessness tomorrow, and we're not even going to let the community have some conversation. Thank you for my time.
Thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Joelle Williams. Hi, my name is Joelle Williams, and my husband and I live here in Greenbray, approximately one mile from this location. I am in opposition of this location as it stands today. We really do need the City Council of Larkspur to be our voice for this unincorporated part of Greenbray. I felt that there have been many who have spoken tonight who obviously expressed my concern, so I'll not be redundant. However, I will say that I have participated in all of the informational zooms on this proposed location. And as has been said tonight, there have not been, it has not been the opportunity for community members who are not in favor to voice their side of this discussion. There are over 2,000 people, with 300 more in the last few days, who have signed a petition that do not feel this is the right approach or location. I appreciate the fact that the gentleman who spoke about the 70 residents nearby, with a portion of those, a portion of those residents being previously homeless. I think that's a very different conversation than a location without requirements for its homeless residents. I also appreciate the gentleman who spoke about the success of the Colorado Springs location. I think it would be wonderful to be a county that we could actually speak to the successful examples for the homeless. But we need this to work for all people, not just for, be successful for a few people. I would ask that tonight that we take a pause and we figure out how to work with the community to come up with the right solution for this location, instead of allowing one individual to drive this decision for an entire community. I mean, I think what we have expressed tonight is that this will have an impact on our community for the next 55 years. And we're, we're not having a full discussion about how this is going to truly be impactful. So I am not in favor of this location, and I appreciate the Larkspur City Council for scheduling this meeting to listen to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Bob Pendleway. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bob Pendole. I live in San Rafael, and I'm speaking for the Marin Environmental Housing Collaborative. We strongly support this Home Key project. You know, the Corte Madera Town Council confronted the same issue in late 2020 with the Home Key aside on Casabuena Drive. Neighbors were as concerned and many were opposed, but the town showed leadership. They brought together the neighbors, both opponents and supporters, into a community working group to make recommendations and monitor the product, process. The Corte Madera Home Key project has moved forward successfully, providing supporting housing for many months now. The town, the Corte Madera Town Council, provide leadership, and the initial concerns of the neighbors were not realized. The project is a success largely due to the efforts and support of the Town Council. We ask that you provide the same leadership. We ask that you work with the County Episcopal Community Services and the Community Advisory Group to respond to the neighbors' concerns. Recognize that the, that the loudest voices are not necessarily the only voices. Larkspur can point to a successful example of its own supportive housing for the formerly homeless at Homewood Bounce King Street facility. This property on South Aliseo is already zoned for this type of residential use. It's close to medical care and a short distance via public transit or a moderate work, walk to shopping and other services. It's also across the street from the county's only crisis stabilization unit. We thank you for your consideration and urge that you support this project. If you provide leadership, Home Key on South Aliseo will be a success.
We have time for two more speakers. Allison, who's the next speaker?
Ed.
Yes, my name is Ted Johnson, resident of Greenbray. I oppose the location of this project. In line with Councilmember Catherine Way's question regarding funding, I would like to know who appraised this property for $11 million. I believe this $11 million could be better spent serving more than 50 people at another facility or property that is already owned by the County of Marin. And I oppose this location. Thank you for the time.
Thank you for your comments. Allison, who's the last speaker this evening?
William McCade.
Welcome.
Thank you. Bill McQuaid. I live in Greenbray. One of my primary concerns is that the housing-first philosophy doesn't mandate sobriety for residents. I know others have mentioned this. ECS says onsite illegal drug use will be prohibited. I don't see how enabling drug and alcohol abuse serves the community interest. How does allowing residents to continue abusing drugs and alcohol help those residents who would like to get clean and sober and end their drug and alcohol dependence? Being around those continuing to abuse drugs and alcohol provides an unhealthy environment for those wanting to kick the habit. There've been recent articles in the San Francisco Chronicle about this issue in San Francisco. There are people who want to quit their drug addiction, but they're pulled back to the Tenderloin area for the easy access to drugs. Seems likely to be a similar situation in Greenbray. Since illegal drug and alcohol use will be prohibited onsite, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that the drug and alcohol use will migrate to nearby park and school safe routes. Unbelievably to me, some proponents of the Home Key project have publicly stated they think students meeting Project Home Key tenants will be a vital learning and educational experience. Children and young adults meeting, befriending, and interacting with those chronically using drugs and alcohol, tier-one and tier-two sex offenders, ex-felons, those dealing with severe mental illness. What could possibly go wrong? Let's say for argument's sake, the program is approved and funded, but it ends up being a total financial and behavioral fiasco and nightmare. From what I've read, once the program is approved and funded, it can't be unwound. What happens then? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and thank all the members of the public who had comments or questions this evening. Mr. City Manager, would now be a good time for staff to give us a summary of, of public comment this evening?
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask, could we take a five-minute break so we could turn that into something we can put up on the screen? We've got a lot of notes to quickly.
I appreciate that. Yes. Should we take a recess?
Well, I wouldn't be surprised if some of the other participants wouldn't mind a chance to stretch, so. Five minutes, if it's all right, Mr. Mayor, would be helpful.
All right. Vice Mayor Paulson, were you raising your hand?
Yeah, I, I don't know if this is workable, but if it's okay with the city manager, there's been so much content. I see 22 more people, and I'm hoping to hear as many people as possible. So if we could continue for those five minutes and people's comments are getting shorter, that would be my preference, but I'll go with what the consensus is.
I'm okay for listening to five more minutes if that's what staff needs. I would ask that the public focus on new information, please.
Mr. Mayor, may I also comment on that?
Yes, Scott.
Yeah, there are, as I mentioned, another 23 people. They've been waiting for probably two and a half hours to speak. Instead of giving two minutes to each, if maybe we could just give 30 seconds to each person, I would hate for people to have waited, you know, for this long to want to speak, and just because they were put on the back of the queue, they didn't get to have their voice heard.
If people will stick to a 30-second time limit, I'm okay with that. I just, I really want to try to not let this run too late, because I don't think we're hearing much new information right now. And at 10 o'clock, I think all of our ability to focus on this is going to start to wander. So five more minutes of public comment, 30 seconds. Allison, next speaker, please.
Missy Christensen. Yes, hi. I'll be quick. My name is Missy Christensen. I live in Kentfield. I have two young children, and I oppose this project. I have attended many meetings regarding this project over the last couple of months. Honestly, tonight is the very first time that I feel like our community is actually being heard. You are the first officials and professionals who appear to be listening to and caring about what our community is saying. The young children walking by this facility and the safety of them is a concern. Severely mentally ill individuals are going to be housed at this facility, not to mention drug-addicted individuals. Please consider taking an official stance against this project. It's a 55-year commitment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Chuck Finney.
Good evening, council members. My name is Chuck Finney. Unlike many of the folks you heard from tonight, I actually live in your jurisdiction in close proximity to the project. I've raised two children in the Kentfield School District that have gone to Basij Kent and Redwood. I'm raising two stepchildren who are doing the same thing. I support the project. I encourage you to do the same. I have a young, there's a young chronically homeless gentleman who lives in a car on, via casitas outside our home. I look forward to him having an opportunity like this and others similarly situated. I, let's see, I'm encouraged by the success Marin has shown in housing chronically homeless folks. I implore you to stop raising sex offenses as an argument against this. You know it's specious. Homeless people are no more likely to be sex offenders than other people in other economic strata. If it was a 40-unit luxury condo complex, you wouldn't be worrying about that, or you wouldn't be raising in opposition. It's fake news.
Thanks, Chuck.
And I just want to, I want to finish by imploring you to listen to the gentleman whose son was homeless and the gentleman who's running the apartment complex in which there are formerly homeless folks living in the facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I noticed that the clock that we have here doesn't seem to be registering the 30-second limit, so it may not be.
I'm trying to do my best to monitor that.
No, I would encourage for your consideration, Mr. Mayor, for you to suggest, given the time constraints that we have, for people to say either that they oppose or they support the project and keep their elaboration on that to a bare minimum.
Thank you. Allison, the next speaker, please.
Zee Reed.
Welcome. You might be muted.
She's not muted.
Unable to connect. I'll move to the next commenter, Shyla Hendrickson.
Hi, thank you very much. I live within a mile of the site. I listened to the county speak. The only justification that I heard for the location of this facility was that the site was developable. I listened to the county speak. The only justification that I heard for the location of this facility was that the site was developable. That does not take into account what is best for the residents of the facility, who do not sound to be appropriately supported, nor does it take into account the close proximity of the facility to schools and seniors and public parks. I ask you to please write a letter in opposition to this facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, are the staff ready to or should we listen to more public comment? Allison, who's the next speaker?
Next we'll hear from Jeff.
Thank you so much for taking my call. I'm Jeff. I live in Kentfield. I work in Greenbrier. I want to, I thank you so much for taking our time. Please write a letter to stop this project. To point out one thing, the PowerPoint presentation and the website that are hosted by ECS are completely inaccurate. They label the C, Community Security Safety Team, and it's not part of what ECS provides. They, I've got an email that the county has and city council has that shows that their CCS team is going to be one person, maybe two. No one's described the tier one and tier two sex offenders for what they really are. I'm happy to share that and there are things on there, not just going to the bathroom public, but in enticing a child into prostitution, forced sodomy, that gets you to tier one. Oral copulation with a minor under fourteen, acts of penetration with foreign objects on victims of minors incapable of giving consent. That's tier two.
I think we get the idea, Jeff.
Right, so so please disclose things properly and and again, for this hiding of what's been done, you need to stand up for the citizens in your community. Please vote against this, Larcher. Thank you so very much.
Next speaker, please.
Apology, Sambir Bharati.
Hi, my name is Jomor Boroty and I live in Greenbrier, very close to the, you know, to this facility. I used to manage an apartment complex in Mill Valley, next to Strawberry, where we we had, you know, mentally homeless, chronically homeless people, you know, to, you know, to Rita House and they had multiple of them. They had they had vouchers through Murray Housing Authority. I didn't want to, you know, make this very, very long. So I saw, you know, the sheriff was there all the time. I saw the drug dealer there all the time. I saw overdose. I saw all kinds of things that you you cannot imagine. I was there for about fourteen months on a daily basis. Totally opposed this. I have two kids. I live in Greenbrier. My kids, they are at Basij. The other one is at Kent. And I don't want my kids to see the same things. The drug dealers, they will be there all the time. And friends of these people, they are coming to the property every day. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager. Are you there?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What's your status?
We'd be happy when you're ready to do a summary. You know, you still have eighteen folks that have their hands up.
I'm sorry, you said how many folks?
According to what I'm seeing, you have eighteen folks. You also have Councilmember Harf, been patiently holding his hand up.
All right, Councilmember Harf, and then we'll talk about. I'm not, I'm not interested in being here for another forty-five minutes, though. Councilmember Harf.
Kevin, you're muted.
Yes, I'm unmuted. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's not necessary for me to take up time here. I'd encourage you to just move the rest of the public comment along.
All right. We have, you said we have eighteen folks. We're gonna, we're gonna do ten more minutes of public comment. And then we'll do the staff summary and then we'll have council direction. Thirty seconds per speaker, please, and I'm going to stick to the clock this time.
So, Mr. Mayor, I do want to apologize, but I've got to go find a different timer software at a different meeting, but I can't actually set this clock to start at thirty seconds, so you're gonna.
I'm using, I'm using my own time device.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, Allison, the next speaker, please.
Noel Herman. Hi, thank you so much for letting me speak. I really appreciate it. My name's Noel Herman. I live in Kentfield. I serve on the Historic Robo Square Board of Santa Rosa, so I know firsthand what it's like to see the homeless there because the shelter is right near us. I very much support the homeless shelters, but not at this location. This is the wrong location. I support that you guys take your time and not rush this. For some reason, they're really rushing this, and I really support you guys to take your time, find the answers. The fact that that one representative said it's complicated.
Okay, we got it. All right, thirty seconds. Next speaker, please.
Michael. Michael, I'll ask you to unmute. I'll move on to the next caller, Melanie Wallen Weber. Melanie, I'll ask you to unmute.
Sorry, thank you. Hi, my name's Melanie Wallen Weber. I thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm a resident of Greenbrier and I oppose this project. It's not a perspective I've come to easily. As I do support programs for vulnerable populations during COVID, our family personally prepared and delivered hundreds of meals for St. Vincent's. I oppose this project because it is inflexible in funding and construction deadlines that do not allow for proper bedding and shaping of the project in a way that works well for the residents of the facility as well as the community that surrounds it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Stacy Morris.
Hi, my name is Stacy Morris and I live in Greenbrier within a mile of the proposed location, and I strongly oppose. This is a complex issue, but the fact is that the majority of the people on this call oppose it, and this is the first time we are being heard. The community has had little to no voice or representation on this issue, which is very frustrating, and I want to thank you so much for hosting this meeting. Please join the school board and send a letter to express your position of opposition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tracy C. Tracy, I'll ask you to unmute.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for staying up so late and listening to all of the residents and their opinions on this project. I am a resident of Greenbrier and I have three school-aged children. I am not opposed to helping the unhoused. This project concept may be a good one, but based on what we have been told about the criteria of who will live here, I do not believe it should be located in such close proximity to schools, parks, and children. There are too many unanswered questions that to support a fifty-five-year-long project without more information is just irresponsible. I think we need to take more time to thoroughly understand what we're committing to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Wei Wei.
Hi, good evening. Thank you so much. I'll be very, very quick. I live in Kentfield. We have three little children. I actually moved here from San Francisco to get away from the homeless. I all have a small business in San Francisco, and it was just amazing to me that it took us two years to open up a small beer and wine bar in San Francisco. I had to speak to the police. I had to speak to the neighborhood, multiple meetings. I've listened to all the meetings for this project and, as everyone has already mentioned, you know, I feel like I had to do more for a four-hundred-square-foot beer and wine bar in San Francisco, which I have to deal with homeless every single day to a point where I'm considering closing my business because it's so much to deal with. Thank you very much for the time. I oppose this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison, how many are left in the queue? There ought to be less than ten. Can't hear you. Can you say that again?
Yes, we're at nine speakers left.
Okay, nine speakers, thirty seconds each. Next speaker, please.
Tom Silva.
Hey, lucky number nine. My name's Tom Silva. I live in Greenbrier, nine four nine oh four. I'm against this project. Fathered two children, going to school. I'd ask the city to actually take an official position against this as well. It's been a rushed process, lack of transparency, lack of meaningful community input. We're going to be stuck with this for the long term. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Jeff Lei.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jeff Lei. I serve on the Kent Woodlands Homeowners Board. I'm speaking from an unofficial capacity, but I think this comes down to the fact that good contracts make good friends. There's a lot of accountability that needs to be worked into this. I encourage you, just as a matter of practice right now, logistically for the rest of this, there's a lot of people that don't even have their hands up that probably have an opinion. I think the best way to do this, which we've done in the past, is to ask people to raise their hands if they oppose or ask people to raise their hands if they object. But personally, I oppose this project. Thanks you guys for your time.
Next, next speaker, please. This should have, what, seven left?
Yes, Kevin Haggerty. Kevin, unfortunately, we can't hear you.
And if you've spoken already, please allow someone else to speak.
Move to the next caller, Tajee Zamanzali.
Hi, I'm Tajee Zamanzali's daughter, Savia Shankin, and I'm in eighth grade. I'm just here to give like a different perspective from the kid's view. I like helping homeless people, but you're not helping them. I'm opposed to this. You're really not helping them. I'd like it if you actually helped the homeless kids, and I think they're they're more innocent and they could be helped. Yeah, and I just, I don't feel safe with people who do drugs like around me and my friends, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Katie Think.
Hello there, council members. Thank you for taking our our comments. I am I'm hoping that you send a letter to support this project. I stand with many others in the community that want to stand against the vilification of our unhoused neighbors. There's many people who will be helped with this project, and I'm hoping that you will stand with good leadership, as has been mentioned before, to propel this project forward. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Carol Eldy.
Thank you for listening. Oh, wait, I, am I still muted?
No, I can hear you.
Oh, thank you. I I appreciate this and I would like to make a suggestion and thank you, Scott, for saying we've all been waiting and waiting and waiting, and just because you're tired and we're all tired, let's let us speak, and I'll make it quick. I am permanently opposed to this project. I live in Kentfield, been a member of the community for many, many, many years. I've worked with people who are mentally ill, severe and severe and persistent mental illness in LA, where we had a project that was successful because there were rules. They lived there. I was there for two years. It was a residential program for a hundred people. There were staff members all the time. There were two psychiatrists who came in twice a week. Everybody had to be on medication. Everybody had to go to AA meetings if they had an addiction problem. The problem with this is you're putting in, and this is the first time I'm hearing it, sixteen people with severe persistent mental illness, schizophrenia, bipolar illness, depression, and putting them and putting them in the same category as homeless people who just need a home. It's very different, and they need help, and they don't need help with the kinds of support that you're not giving them here.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tiffany.
Hi, I'll keep it short. Tiffany B. I live in Greenbrier, opposed to this project. The location is inappropriate for the proposed resident types, and it's going to cause irreparable damage to our neighborhood. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. All right, next speaker, please. We should be down to several.
Malone Mandana.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Mandana Malone. I live in Kentfield, California. I'm opposed to the project as as it's presented. In theory, having a facility like this for the homeless is completely aligned with all of my beliefs, but based on everything I've learned, the project is not very well thought out. It's rushed and it feels very political. The partner the state has chosen in ECS doesn't have a proven track record. ECS has had multiple lawsuits brought against them, and so I wonder how much due diligence has really been done in partnering with them. Further, just the comment about speaking and hypotheticals, I think if a project, if we're not considering all of the what-ifs and what can happen, that's not a very well thought out project or one that's considered the community or the residents that are going to be living in it. And finally, I just want to echo what someone else said in the fact that just having roof over your head is not enough to stop drug use. It's not enough to help those who are mentally ill. There have to be programs and accountability measures in place in order for something like this to be successful.
Thank you. Allison, do we have any further other speakers, please?
I'll move on, Marcy. John, I'll ask you to unmute. It looks like this caller is not online anymore. I'll go to the next in line, Michael.
Is, let me ask you this. Is this our last speaker this evening?
Yes, you do, you do have callers continually raising their hands.
I understand.
Continue to grow.
This was the last one in the queue.
Yeah, this is, we're going to stop, stop after this one, and we're going to have staff summarize at this point. All right.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Mike Freeman and I've lived in the Kentfield, Greenbrier area for forty years, know it well, raised four kids. I, I'm a.
We lost you there, Michael.
I say we need to help these people, but this is the wrong location. I have extensive experience in real estate and looking at the efficiencies of this site, they just don't exist. The cost to retrofit the building, which is in very poor shape, and to house these, say, forty-seven units, works out to about five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars per unit or one thousand three hundred eighty-three dollars per square foot. That is incredible. We could build a very, very nice new facility somewhere else, out in the fringe there in Centerfell or even around the Marin Civic Center. This is the wrong location. We need to help people, but this is not the right site. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. City Manager, would you please ask staff to provide a summary and then council will discuss the letter?
Okay, we'll be very brief, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Assistant to the City Manager Shannon O'Hair to share her screen sheet. And we're conferring, and she's put together a high-level summary of what we've been hearing. I want to emphasize that in creating a high-level summary, I'm not trying to minimize the specifics of any individual speaker's comments tonight. There's a lot of folks who offered some very detailed comments and descriptive comments. We're just trying to capture what we felt were the consistent themes that we were hearing throughout the evening. We heard a lot of statements of concern, and we identified the following categories as recurring. One about the site's location and the potential issues around safety of the residents who are in the immediate vicinity and in the greater, larger area. There are particularly a lot of comments about children and seniors. We heard a lot of comments about the makeup and nature of the tenant population. We also heard a lot of comments about what kind of rules or restrictions are there going to be for tenants. You heard a lot of general comments about the process and the specific engagement process and the ability for participation. You heard some comments about the fast timeline, and you also heard some concerns about the Housing First model in general. On the other side, we heard consistent themes from the supporters. Most supporters felt that this was an asset to the community, that it would provide quality housing to the unhoused population. We had some speakers raise equity concern that they see this as addressing equity issues, and then we did have some speakers who cited that they believe in the Housing First model and support it. Before I turn back to you, Mr. Mayor, I do also. Before I turn back to you, Mr. Mayor, I do also hope as we go through this process to decide what our commentary as a city agency might be, to bear in mind that everyone who's involved with this project, whether they work for the county ECS, are all well-intentioned and are all doing their jobs. They're all professionals working in their fields, and this is, at the end of the day, an adopted policy at, at the state. And frankly, at the federal level, and implementing this program at the local level is consistent with a lot of this direction from higher agencies. So just hope we'll bear that in mind as we navigate the remainder of the evening.
I thank you for that. I'll bring it back to the council now for discussion of how we want to absorb what we've heard this evening. And first, if we want, the question I guess is, do we want to prepare a comment letter? We've heard a lot of comments. We've heard a lot of concerns. And what, what, then get direction from the council as to what the letter should include. So who would like to begin? Councilmember Haro?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'd like to come back again and share observations, but just as a very preliminary matter, I've been kind of doing a rough tally of, of who's been speaking and where they've identified themselves as being resident. And I think that's, that's helpful because we, we are the city council for the city of Larkspur. And I think our, our folks are first and foremost in our mind, even though we want to be respectful of others from surrounding communities. I kind of tallied up 18 people who clearly identified themselves as living in Larkspur, who spoke tonight. Three people who clearly identified themselves as not living either in Larkspur or in the Kent Field, unincorporated Green Bay area. And 37 people in the Kent Field and unincorporated Green Bay area. That's just a rough, very rough count because many people just simply identify themselves as living in Green Bay, which in my experience generally means unincorporated Marin and not Larkspur. People who live in the incorporated part of Green Bay typically identify themselves as living in Larkspur. I also want to make clear that although virtually everyone in the Kent Field and unincorporated Marin community registered opposition to the project, the same is not true for those who identify themselves as living in, in Larkspur. A majority did express opposition, but there was a, a significant percentage of those who expressed comments and identified themselves as living in Larkspur who expressed support. And all three of the folks who identified themselves as living in other communities also expressed support. So I just thought that was an interesting little kind of rough set of statistics. I don't, I don't vouch for any of it because I was trying to scramble down as best I could. But I guess the bottom line is, within our community, there are those who support the project and there are those who oppose it. And I think it's important for us, if we are contemplating putting together a letter of comment to the Board of Supervisors, that that letter of comment reflect the diversity of opinion that's, that has been expressed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, who, who else, who would like to speak next? Scott?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll give my thoughts here. I was keeping a different tally. I had 50 people opposing, 10 people in support. So about 80% opposing, 20% supporting. My thoughts on this are fairly simple. I agree with Kevin. We are the City Council for the residents of Larkspur. When I spoke with the Chief of Police, he said there are, in general, two to four homeless people in Larkspur at any one time. This project would be benefiting the county in the sense of, you know, taking people from other places and giving them housing. But it's going to be housing in Larkspur. I think it's a very noble idea to have our city reach out and help homeless people from, from other parts of the county. But I think if we're going to do that, we have to ensure that it can be done safely. And I don't feel that that has been assured to this point. I don't feel confident that this has been thought through. I don't feel confident that all the potential problems have been addressed. And I think that's really what we have heard tonight, is the residents of Larkspur saying, hey, we are in favor of, of trying to find housing for people who don't have housing, but it needs to be done in a thoughtful way. It needs to be done in a safe way. Needs to be done in an appropriate way, and people feel it to this point that hasn't been done. And as such, I, I find it, as a representative of the people of Larkspur, I would find it very difficult to
Catherine?
So I'd like to ask a process question. I don't know who this is best gauged towards. We heard a lot of comments tonight about the process itself feeling rushed by members of the community. And that they would, they're asking for a step back to do more engagement, more communication. If that is a position that we take, how does that affect the, or will it make an impact on the state allocation? And I don't know who's best to answer that.
Dan Schwartz, you want to interpret that? I mean, we're, we're really translating public comment this evening, considering communicating it in some form to the county. I don't know, I'm not quite sure how to answer Catherine's question. Do you want to take a stab at it?
Well, at the end of the day, your, your comments are just comments. You're ultimately a constituent. You're certainly, I think, a valued constituent of the Board of Supervisors, but, but you're essentially providing your thoughts. You know, the process is rushed is a challenging thing to unpack, right? So is it that the decision to invest in this site was rushed? Is it the need to build greater certainty for the community about the, this, the partnership between the county and the city and the future that feels rushed and that it would need, I think it would warrant further explorer, exploration. I have always understood my direction as your steward, as your, as your person who runs the organization, that we should seek to protect everybody's quality of life. And I, the decision the board makes on the 15th doesn't start or stop that. And if this project's moving forward, we'll continue to engage the county and ECS so that we have successful outcomes. And there's a whole lot more process that's going to happen in that regard. So if that's what we're talking about, just rest assured, that process is probably still in its infancy. But the decision-making process, the awarding process, the selecting of the site, I can't really speak to that because I don't have a context for what, what rushed is in that respect. I don't work in this field. So I don't really know what, how to respond to you, but we certainly wouldn't be affecting that timeline.
Okay. I think that many of the people, at least that I've listened to over the course of this, have felt a little bit powerless. And I just want to see where that, where we land on the ability to continue to shape this project if this project does go forward.
Okay, Gabe?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I mean, first, I, I really want to thank all the speakers, either for or against the project and the county. You know, you, a lot of professionals here, a lot of people with some, you know, good arguments, good thoughts, and there were a lot of robust arguments for me on both sides. I, I really want to see this project succeed, and I am not opposed to the project, but I really am opposed to the process. I today, in the last few days, sent out 75 communications. And my specific question to everybody was, let me know under what circumstances, under what conditions you feel your public safety concerns would be adequately addressed. And, you know, from the responses I got and from everything I heard tonight, I think there's work to be done. And I have a list myself of 10 or 20 concerns, and I'm committed to work with the county if that's possible and, or whatever process we can do as a council. But I do believe we need to send a letter which voices our concerns. And the spirit of the letter would be, listen, disclose areas of possible compromise, and remember that a 55-year commitment could use a little more time to deliberate. So I, I can't support it as it stands, but I certainly would like to see homelessness addressed in Marin.
All right, thank you for your comments. So, Mr. City Manager, I've heard Councilmember Haro.
Yeah, just before we send it back to, to Dan, just a couple of things very quickly. First of all, I want to share, I'm sure, the views of everyone on the council and expressing thanks to everyone who came out tonight to share their views. They were largely courteous and respectful, although deeply felt in many respects, and, and that's to be appreciated and congratulated. We want people in our community to be engaged, and I think tonight's meeting was a reflection of, at least on our part, success in doing that, and that's a good thing. I also want to, I think, echo, I think, some of the comments that our city manager made earlier. There is a process associated with this, and it's not going to end when the Board of Supervisors makes a decision on whatever funding opportunities are presented to it by, by the state, which could happen as early as the 15th, maybe later, but possibly as early as that. There will be a lengthy process that will follow on after that, where I expect our city council, members of the community, and the county and the representatives to be fully engaged in continuing to address the kinds of issues that we've identified today and other issues that we may yet have to identify as we go through the process. This is a complicated process. I think the timeline that we heard from county staff was that we're at least a year away before opening the doors on this facility. That creates a, a lot of opportunity for interaction with people who are involved in the process. That includes members of the public. There's a process for setting that up. There is precedent that's been set up by our neighbors in Cap Cora Madera for success in engaging in that kind of the process. And I think if we learn the lessons from Cora Madera, we will, we will maximize the opportunities that we can make available to our residents and our neighbors outside of Larkspur to make a good project. So we're just kind of getting started with this process, but the fact of the matter is the Board of Supervisors will make a decision on funding. And once that decision is made, there will be a process going forward. And I hope our comments, if we submit something, will reflect a commitment to engage in that process in a positive way. That's it.
Thank you. Dan, Dan Schwartz, I have a question for you. There was a, a member of the public that used the words cooperative agreement in their comments. Are there any mechanisms or precedents for such agreements to help create certainty about the roles and responsibilities between neighbors? In this, in, in this case, maybe it's a question for Sky. I think I'm not, I'm not asking because I want such a thing. I just wanted to know if there's such a has precedent for such a
Well, there's certainly plenty of precedent for agreements. So it's, it's tough to get into the specifics of that. I think if in my staff report, I suggested one area that we want to have extensive discussion with the county is how to make sure that the county through the Sheriff's Office helps support Central Marine Police to make sure that the right resources are in place and the right responses take place throughout the 24/7 period of, of operations so that, so that people can be assured there will always be a response if there's one needed. That's certainly something I'll probably ask the mayor to include in the comment letter would be, you know, we want to work on that with, with the Sheriff's Office. I need to follow up with Cora Madera. I heard at least one speaker say there's a cooperative agreement with Cora Madera. I haven't seen that, so I'll need to find out if that's a written document or some verbal agreements. And I'll have to report back to the council at a later date on that. So, yes, we can work on some cooperative agreements. But again, that's part of a process after, after the funding decisions made.
And, and I can just add that other members of my firm are engaged with Home Key Projects around the Bay Area on the public agency and the private partner side. I haven't heard from them about cooperative agreements, but I will query them about that and work with the city manager on reviewing those if there are some examples that we think are applicable, and we incorporate that into the process that he described.
Thank you very much. I, I will observe that I believe there, there is a consensus to prepare and send a letter. Am I correct in that sensing of consensus among council members? Can just shake your heads?
Yes.
Yes, Scott?
I, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I, I would make a motion, if that's appropriate, that we draft a letter in line of what Vice Mayor Paulson said, and he can, he said it much better than I would, but something to the effect that we're supportive of the concept, but we have concerns that haven't been addressed. And, and Vice Mayor, you can repeat what you said, but, but when you said it, I was like, yes, that's exactly what I was thinking. So, you know, maybe we can come to a consensus on those, those thoughts.
Gabe, do you want to, there are two of you. Is there a motion and a second in there?
Not sure what the motion is, but I
Do you want to, you want to make, you want to reframe your language and, and make a motion?
Yeah, let, let me withdraw my motion as, Gabe, why don't you make a motion based on what you had said earlier? And I would second that.
Yeah, if, if I can make a comment first, I mean, I just want to say that, you know, I really want the community to come together. And the people who are opposed, and they're, and a very large number, and I don't care where they live, it's a public safety concern, and we, our first and foremost job is public safety. And let's not forget that. We're serving the homeless, but we have to serve the public and the public safety. So my motion would be that we are in support of the project, but we cannot support it fully until certain public safety concerns have been addressed. And I think we were alluding to involving the county, involving Central Marine Police, having a cooperative agreement. Those details, I, I don't know how to put into a motion, but the spirit of the motion is, you know, we've heard so many people, and we want to work with the county, but public safety seems to have not been adequately addressed, and that's really the spirit of the letter.
And I'm, I'm sorry, if I could, my only modification was you started off with, we support the project. I would, I would feel comfortable with, we support the concept. But the project as presented, I don't feel that I could support until and unless our safety concerns are, are addressed.
Gabe, do you want to?
But, but I
Catherine Wang?
I, I think you said it well the first time around, Gabe, and I know it's getting late. I, I think you said it well the first time around, Gabe, and I know it's getting late. I don't know if we have consensus of support or, or not support at this point. I think there is still a lot of unanswered questions that our community has asked to have clarified. And some of them are health and safety oriented, others are financially oriented, others are the, the transparency of the process. I, I still, I, I feel like we're in a position where we have, we can't say yes or no, support or not support, until we get clarification on some more things. And I think that's what the community has asked us tonight. There are many people who are not supportive of this, as same time there are people who are supportive of it. But there's the, the overall issues that were outlined by the city manager's report have to be still answered. So I, I feel like it's less that I want to have a definitive statement of support or lack of support without clarification of a lot more questions. How does that sound, Gabe?
Well, yeah. I, I, you said it very well, thank you.
Well, you made a motion, do you want to change it?
I think Councilmember Harof, if you want to speak, I just, I'm curious to get, you know, a stall, be on the same page.
Is that all right, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I it's not clear to me that we need a motion to proceed tonight with the preparation of a comments letter. I, I kind of chafe at the formality of a motion when what we're doing is trying, trying to, trying to engage in an advisory capacity with respect to the Board Supervisor. I think it would be perhaps more appropriate just to simply ask the city manager if, and I'd like to ask that in a moment, if the city manager has sufficient direction from council to prepare a letter for the mayor's signature. And I would encourage that that letter not take a position either in support or in opposition to the project as it's currently proposed, but to acknowledge that during the course of our meeting tonight, we did hear from, from, we did hear a diversity of opinions from both our media constituents and from the community at large. And to summarize, as, as staff has already attempted in a very preliminary way, the character of the comments and concerns that we heard expressed, and that we feel that it's important for those comments and concerns to be acknowledged by the Board Supervisors and taken into account as we move the process forward going into the future, regardless of whatever decision they take on the funding issue. I think that would be sufficient for purposes of tonight. I don't think a motion is really necessary. If the other, if others feel differently, that's fine. But I think for purposes of performing that advisory role, a more formal approach is not required.
My, I, whether council members want to make motions or not, that's up to them. May I, I would like to make an observation before I go to another round of comments. And this came out of a discussion I had with our city manager over the last couple of days. The proposal, as well-intended as it is, attempts to do something that other projects of its type has not attempted yet. And, and that is most of the Home Key Projects, in my understanding, are in areas that have very, very difficult conditions, and the people that become residents of these projects could be, they're, they're actually being lifted out of very, very difficult circumstances that exist in the area in which the project is located. In, in this case, the project is located in an area that doesn't have the same pathology to it. It's not, it's not, it's not a violent crime-ridden area in the so the perception of the community in which the project is proposed isn't the same as the area, the, the community areas in which many of these other projects are located. By that, I mean, in most of the areas, the Home Key Project is perceived as an improvement to the community. This, this is not being perceived this way in, in this, in this instance. So I would put that as a challenge to the county to what is it about the community standards? And we talked about having consistent community standards in the past. What is it about the standards of this particular community that requires a, a different approach to the project if the project is going to be a good neighbor? The project has to be perceived as an improvement to the area in which it's going to be located, as, as the other projects have demonstrated. And, and when those conditions can be met, the project will be perceived as a success. So I would, I would ask if we do send a letter that it have those observations included and aspirations associated with any encouragement of, of, of the concept. As it stands, I think the public has told us very clearly they don't have a perception that this would be an improvement to the community as it, as it's currently being proposed. So is, would any of the council members like to make a motion, or as Councilmember Harof has suggested, is city manager have adequate direction to draft the letter? Gabe?
I, I think Councilmember Candela is heading up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott, please.
That's okay, after you, Gabe.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, first, I, I think it's appropriate to make a motion because I don't want to let her paraphrasing a three-hour conversation. The motion is really to reflect a higher, the, the requirement of a high standard of public safety. You know, some people may say it's fear, it's misconception, it's prejudice, but I think we want to involve public safety more. So I think if I were to make motion, it, it would very much incorporate what you said, Mayor, which is, you know, we are in, you know, we, we would like to collaborate with the county, you know, and see this project succeed, but there are many unanswered questions, and so we'd like to register those questions and objections and, and see them answered, you know, and possibly before the February, February fifteenth deadline.
Is that, that's a motion?
I'll take friendly amendments.
Okay. Scott, and then Kevin.
Can I interrupt? I'm sorry, Scott, I was going to suggest, at the risk of being rude to all our guests, we might ask, we might excuse them over to the attendee side so that we can, the audience can focus on the council members, a lot of folks on the screen. So if that's okay, I'm going to have Allison move the county staff and ECS over to the attendee side.
Okay.
Thank you for attending, and then you guys will be a little more front and center.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your participation this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Councilmember Candell.
Yeah, my, my perspective on this is that there is a petition with two thousand signatures in it, saying that they're against this project. Eighty percent of the people that spoke today were against this project. If, if we're going to write a letter, I think that should be reflected in the letter. I think it should say, you know, we, representing the city of Larkspur, at this point are not in favor of this project, and we can say why, and the reasons are, we don't feel our safety concerns have been addressed, or we feel that, you know, we need more answers to these questions, or, you know, that type of thing. But I think we would be doing a disservice to our constituents not to include that in the letter, because that's clearly what's been voiced, and that's clearly what's in this petition that's been signed.
Your inclusion, if I might clarify, is that we had a a public meeting and eighty percent of, whatever the percentage of the comments were in opposition to the county proposal.
That, that, it may, that's fine, I mean, not necessarily. I was just saying that we, as a city council representing the views of our constituents, our constituents have made their voice heard, that they are not in favor of the project as it stands. The reason they're not in favor of it is lack of disclosure, public safety issues, everything that, that's been mentioned by city councils. So I'm, I'm in favor of, of keeping all that in the letter. But all I'm saying is that I think the, we should include in the letter that we're not in support of this project, and this is why, and not be neutral. Well, we kind of might be in support of it, or, you know, we really don't know yet, because as the project stands, our constituents are not in support of it, and we are their representatives, and I think that's, that's our job.
The council member input to that point? Councilmember Harof?
Just a, a clarifying question, if I could. I understand the sentiments that are being expressed here. Agree with some, I don't agree with others. But I'm also very mindful of the practical reality of the decision that the Board of Supervisors may be confronting next Tuesday. It is possible, maybe even likely, that the state will present the county with a funding opportunity in, in the next day or two, and the county will act on that funding opportunity on Tuesday. So the quest, the clarification that I'd like to get is that if we're going to say some of the things that Councilmember Candell is suggesting that we should, and I'm not saying that I agree that we should, but if we do, are we expressing those views in a way that suggests that our view is that the county should not accept the funding opportunity presented by the state until those views or, those perspectives are fully addressed? Because if that's the case, I don't think that's realistic. The county is going to do the action that they feel that they need, take the action that they feel they need to take. So that was a clarifying question. Is that what, is that what the council wants? We sent a letter saying that we don't support this program unless these concerns are addressed before the county accepts the funding opportunity.
I, I heard the city manager say that we have identified things that we would like to talk about at the right time. Was that, did I, Dan, did I get that right?
Well, I think what I was trying to say, Mr. Mayor, is I think regardless of whether you choose to send a comment letter, I have a responsibility to engage the county on whole host topics, and I certainly got a great sense tonight of, of the specifics of some of those concerns from different people. You know, I, I think you have the challenge right now of whether there's consensus around the words support and oppose, and if there's consensus around one of those words, and that's how you want to frame a comment letter. That, that's sort of what I'm hearing is the, the challenge that you're facing at the moment.
Well, I, I heard one council member ask us to take a kind of sense of what we heard from the public and then align ourselves with the, the, what he perceives as the majority view. I don't know that everybody would see, see their participation in this issue that way, but I'd like to hear from others. Councilmember Way or Vice Mayor Paulson? How, how, how would you like the letter to be portrayed?
This, we're, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place, to be honest, because we don't have a lot of power over this situation. It was designed by the state to take the power away from local control, and let's just face it. And we need to, as Scott says, listen to our constituents and, and hear them and voice and accept their concerns and be resolute about that, but realizing that it, we are just one constituent as a council to many other voices, and I don't know where our power lies. And it's a little frustrating, I'll say, because I heard all of the hundred and sixty-five letters that came in, and it's a little frustrating that we have I don't feel like many members of our community have been really fully engaged in the process, and I would like to have a step back, and I would like to support a step back, but I don't really know if that we have any sway in that matter at all. At the same time, I don't want to deny or, or a, a process that could be refined, and we could have a successful project. At this point, I don't think the community has the buy-in to make this a successful project. So it's not a support or deny, it's more that, that I think the process has been flawed, and they need to, to engage the process again to really see if this is going to be successful for the residents themselves, and not just the community members, but the actual whole community, which are the people who live here, the people who work here, and the people who will occupy that space. So how we voice that, I don't know, Scott wanted to do a, a definitive. I'm not sure we're at a definitive place right now. I think there's a lot of unanswered questions. I mean, Gabe, you brought up a lot of unanswered things that need clarification, and we are one constituency of the larger body.
I, I have some ideas, but I, I want to hear from Gabe again.
Yeah, I, I just, two points, Catherine, thank you, I thought that was really well put. You know, if I were to, you know, frame it in a motion, I would say, we're not opposed to the project, we're opposed to the process. And I, the second comment I would make is that I, I think the artificial rush of saying it's not realistic funding comes, they're going to sign a check, really underestimates what could be done here. I mean, I, I'm coming at this from a win-win perspective. I think that public safety address, concerns can be addressed, but we need to get the sheriff office more involved, the DA, you know, we need to get Central Morin. I, I know some of this has happened, but I, I have also spoken with those people, I've heard it from many sides. I think there is still a chance for an eleventh-hour correction to the process. That's the spirit of the letter, I'm not trying to do a futile exercise in opposition. So, so I think, I think we could say, we're not opposed to the project, we're opposed to the process, and we would like as soon as possible, you know, to, to address some of the following concerns. And, and if the project goes through and the, you know, the money comes in, perhaps this will sway what happens further down the road, because I think there are many gaping loopholes right now. You know, I want to believe this will work, but I also feel from a public safety perspective, I need more guarantees.
Scott?
Yeah, ju- just a, a question to throw out there. It feels like we are out of the loop, and, you know, intentionally by the state, by the federal government, we're supposed to be out of the loop. And the question is, on behalf of our constituents, we want to be in the loop, we want to have a say in how this happens. We want to have a say in whatever variables there are to this. And my thought process is, what can we do to get a seat at the table? What can we do to kind of entice the county to care what we say, to care what our, our residents say, to take it into consideration? I, I spoke to Sky about, you know, filing a lawsuit and asking for an injunction, you know, as a way to get, get the county's attention and say, hey, maybe we should talk to the city, maybe we should care what the city says. Because up to, up to now, the, the impression that I've gotten is they don't care. They don't care what our constituents think, they're going to do what they want to do. And, and I think that's, in my opinion, the reason we're writing this letter is to try to somehow get a seat at the table and have our concerns addressed. And, and whatever the council feels is the most effective way to do that, whether it's taking a position saying we're against this, or saying we're not against it, we're against the process, as long, that, that's my, the big thought for me is just that's the purpose of this, and, and other people may disagree, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Dan Schwartz? We heard those folks from the county say they were open and looked forward to working with everybody to develop this as, as things move forward. Is that right?
Yeah, I, 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 I want to make sure, speaking for myself, that I'm clear with the council and the community that the county staff's been communicative with me. I, I have been able to The county staff's been communicative with me. I, I have been able to, uh. Follow what they're doing, and they've, uh, answered questions for me, and, um.
Well, I agree with what Scott said. We, we want to create a place at the table so we can have an impact. Um. And we heard from the many, many people in the community tonight, maybe more than. Um. In the diversity of opinion, maybe, maybe we heard more people opposed to what, um, they're hearing about than, than not. Um. Would it be fair to create a letter that says, uh, you know, we recognize this is. Uh, you're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here. Many, many people in the community are not for this. Um, here, here's a list of, uh, our observations, uh, identified impacts, concerns. Uh, organized from public safety on down and saying we want a seat at the table to help, uh. Work through this, um. What's the process to do there? It sounds like a letter.
It does.
And, um, Councilmember Haro?
Um, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I don't have an objection to what you just, um, uh, stated. I think that's kind of what I stated earlier in this, in this conversation. Um, I think it's important to, uh, be honest with the county about what we have heard. Um, from those who participated, uh, tonight, recognizing that those who participated in. The process we had tonight were a self-selecting group and may or may not accurately represent. Uh, the sensibilities of the community as a whole, but clearly those were. Um, those were expressions of those who participated tonight, and we can't ignore those. Um, I, I think what you've just described is fine. We do want a seat at the table. My own view is that we have always had a seat at the table. Um, we will continue to have a seat at the table regardless of what happens on February fifteenth. And I personally am committed to, um, occupy a part of that seat. Uh, along with my colleagues on this council and aggressively promote the interests of our constituents. Um, I don't think that process ends tonight. It doesn't end on the fifteenth. It will continue for quite a while. It's an iterative, ongoing process, um, which may be challenging to some, but I think it's exciting. Uh, to me at least, to be able to represent our community in that way. So, uh, uh, again, I think, uh, direction to, uh, the city manager to reflect what we all heard tonight. And we all heard it. Um, both on the plus and the negative. I want to make sure that any letter that is submitted also reflects that. Um, the, uh, opposition that we did hear tonight was not universal, even though it may have been, uh, in the majority. Um, that would be fine with me. Um, but as I said, I think we already have a seat at the table, so I'm not sure what more we would be asking for.
Are the council members, uh, additional direction to the city manager?
But. Catherine, it, I think it's less a seat at the table. I mean, uh, Councilmember Candell and I sit on that. I think it's where the power lies, and we don't, we're not sitting in a position of power. And I'm concerned about that, and I don't think we have too much control over that. But we can still be in the process, but whether we have the power to direct it is negligible to me, so. I, maybe it's just because it's eleven fifteen at night and I'm a little tired, but that seems to be, um. I think we may have less power than we, we, our community believes we have.
Well, I always liked the expression seat at the table, um. Additional direction to the city manager?
Uh, I, I, uh, Mr. Mayor, I agree with your observation on that last point.
I'm wondering if we should make that motion, then, you know, that just, well, motion or no motion, uh, can we as a council agree? Uh, I think we have already come to many points of agreement, but what we're saying is that, you know, we would like to register that there's significant opposition.
Yes, I, I think, reflecting what took place at the meeting tonight, I think is a fair.
Reflecting what took place at the meeting and as well, you know, which is not to deny that there are many community members in support. And we as a council, you know, seem to collectively support, you know, the intention of the project, but we are opposed to the process. And part of that has also been our lack. You know, tonight, you've heard enough people say this is the first time we've been heard. And I think that shows a failure in process. I don't care if it's a seat at the table or if it's a petition. There has not really been a robust dialogue in any of the, you know, ma- videos I've seen and so forth, so. I think w- we have to reflect that, that we're registering opposition, but we're also really asking for more robust dialogue. Even if it's only, you know, six days left, you know, there are unanswered questions, and we can't just sit by and say, you know. Well, let's just keep going. Let's just kick this can down the road.
I, I like your term, uh, your phrase earlier, that there is a, a lot of work to do, and that needs to happen fast. Uh, so, uh, you, you said you wanted to make a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, I'd be interested in, in making sure that the council agrees, but my motion would be to, 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 you know, incorporate those points however.
I, I see. Okay, thank you very much. Um, we heard that. Uh, Councilmember Haro?
Um, just again, maybe, maybe we can cut to the chase here. Um, my suggestion before was. Um, to, instead of a formal motion, would be simply to request from the city managers. Uh, his, his view on whether, having heard the discussion that has occurred tonight, both in the public forum and among council members. Um, whether, regardless of whether there's a motion on the table or not. Um, whether the city manager has, uh, sufficient understanding and direction from what he has heard tonight. Uh, from all of us to prepare a draft of that letter, um, for consideration and approval.
Uh, okay, I think he has. Mr. City Manager, is that true?
I think the only question I have about the way Councilmember Haro framed it is, um. Who's approving the draft? And because, uh. If the board's taking this up next Tuesday. Um, you know, our staff report, it's recommended that you delegate that authority to the mayor.
Yes.
And if that's what you meant, then that's great.
Yeah.
Otherwise, we need to figure out what the.
I assume just, just, yeah, just, just to clarify, uh, Dan, both Dan's, that is what I meant. I mean, I, we don't, we don't have time for, uh, a lot more discussion, so I, I think. My suggestion would be if the city manager feels that he has direction to prepare a letter. That could be, um, viewed and approved and signed, um, by the mayor in time for it to be submitted in advance of the Board of Supervisors meeting next Tuesday. That would be fine with me.
Okay, I, I have a quick question. Mr. Mayor, uh, do you feel that you have a sufficient understanding of the city council's position so that? You know, you could read this letter and make whatever edits that you feel are necessary so that it reflects the position of the city council?
I do, and I, I promise to, to, uh, be fair-minded about it.
Okay, it's all, it's all we get asked for. Okay, I'm satisfied.
All right, Mr. City Manager, do you have direction?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I believe I do.
Okay. Um, that concludes this business item tonight. Um. The next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Um, Mr. Mayor, just a reminder, if you, we did move the public comment, and you, you need to ask if anyone has an off-agenda. Item that they want to comment on.
You are right. Is there, are there members of the public that would like to make comments on items that were not on the agenda this evening? Allison?
Thank you. I just lowered hands that had been previously raised, and I'm looking for any raised hands for non-agenda public comment. Rick Adler.
Hi, Rick, do you have a comment on an item not on the agenda this evening?
Yes, I wanted to comment on the fact that, um. The state of California is about to lift the, um. Mandates for prevention of COVID virus, including wearing. I hope not for the Zoom meetings for the government, because I want to speak in favor of continuing the Zoom meetings. Because I think there are, they're one of the few blessings we got out of the, few good things we got out of the COVID is the Zoom meetings. Hey, and, um, I take tonight's an example of how valuable a Zoom meeting can be. Because I don't think any of us could have sat through this in the old, um. Meeting room at Longspur City Hall for all this time. It's much more comfortable, much easier. And much, um, for the people like me, I can see better, I can hear better, and look at the, um, quality of the presentations. It's just a much better process than the old-fashioned way of doing it, and also. The, the whole country seems to be tired of the COVID virus. And, uh, you know, they're done with it, but the virus isn't done with us, and it's going to come back again. So I just wanted to speak in favor of. In light of the opening up, that I hope we can continue with the Zoom meetings. And tonight was a really example of, couldn't have been done without these Zoom meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Mr. Mayor, I, I want to congratulate Mr. Adler on saying probably what the most thoughtful thing we've heard all night today, so thank you very much before we adjourn.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that would like to make comments on items not on this evening's agenda?
Annie Prupus?
Hi, I just had a question. Um, I am a supporter of our neighborhood voices, and I know that Kevin Erroff has endorsed that. Um, and that's, it, it has the similar blanket override of local zoning laws, SB nine and SB ten. And I was just wondering if Kevin could elaborate on his position, and if that position is reflected by the rest of the city council members. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think that was a question to me.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I think that, I think the speaker was referring to the. Um, uh, the proposed initiative that is, um, being circulated, uh, for possible inclusion on the ballot. Um, that would, um, be responsive to the. Um, trend over the last couple of years reflected most starkly by SB nine, um, to remove, um. Uh, control over local land use decisions in particular. Um, from, um, municipalities and counties, um, and continue to have them increasingly reside within the state. Um, at the speaker's crack that I have, um, ex- indicated my support for that initiative. Um, I'm not sure where they are in terms of actually gathering signatures. Um, I, I've had conversations with the city manager about that. Um, I think i- i- as a general matter. Um, the city's position, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dan, is that, um, on matters of this sort, unless, uh, Cal Cities. Um, takes a leadership role in, um, um, supporting a particular position. Um, we're often reluctant to, uh, take a position independently. That doesn't preclude individual council members from supporting the initiative or opposing the initiative. Um, I, of course, as I said, have, have, on, on the record, supporting it. But I don't think that the city has taken a position on that. I don't think Cal Cities has yet taken a position on it. Um, perhaps Councilmember Way, since you may be a little closer to Cal Cities and their process than I am, you could comment on where they might be on that.
Uh, I don't want to comment because I haven't had time to really look at the current information.
Okay.
Are there other members of the public that would like to ask questions or make comments on items not on the agenda this evening?
I'm looking for any additional raised hands, and there's no further public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for attending this evening. Thank you, everybody, for, uh, who was in attendance to offer information and answer questions. We appreciate all the community members that stayed up late and waited in line patiently to make public comment. We're sorry, we don't have, um. The amount of time that it would take to listen to everybody and everything they would want to say, but I think we got a great, uh, window on the community opinion. Uh, from those that we, that spoke this evening on all sides of this issue. So with that, the next item on the agenda is adjournment. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Thank you again tonight. Thank you to the staff. For preparing a good meeting. This was a challenging meeting, and we really appreciate everybody's hard work. Uh, you made, made it look easy, but it was very difficult. Uh, thanks and good night, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for leading a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone.